Good afternoon, everyone. I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs, Friday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at three P M. This meeting is a continuation of the Board of Commissioners' regular session of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, and continue of January seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call me.
Mayor LaHusis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Tera Paney has recused himself and was excused. Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiota?
Here.
This is the item fifteen, the Ankle Harbor. The owner is two thousand and twenty dash thirty-four, Bliniman Airplane Development and Rezoni. This is a second reading, and this is a quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi-traditional process, and he'll run the meeting for this item and advise where we are continuing from. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a reading of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for seventy-two point six-two acres, more or less, of real property located at four-two-five-zero-one U S Highway nineteen north, on the east side of U S Highway nineteen north. From a zoning designation, G B General Business, a zoning designation, R P D Residential Plan Development. Approving preliminary plan development for Ankle Harbor Residential Plan Development, providing for waivers of design requirements of the R P D's district, and providing for findings and providing an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four by title only. I'll explain the quasi-traditional process. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Have there been any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest that have arisen since January seventh, two thousand twenty-one? If so, I need you to tell us what they are. Vice Mayor, say your hand go up first.
Yeah, I had multiple conversations with individuals. I talked with Cindy Tera Paney from the applicant. She wanted to clarify that I understood that Hayes Road couldn't be built by the applicant, and I clarified with her that I understood that. She also offered if I wanted to speak with the developer, I can't remember the owner, or one of the principals, I said, no, thank you. We had some discussions along as the road aspect. I did talk to multiple residents who reached out to me that they said they were not in favor and had questions about some of the items in the application. And then I also talked to city staff about the application as well.
Mr. Trask, I received two phone calls from Mr. John Tera Paney. He is not the applicant, but his wife is, and he wanted to discuss this item.
Okay, and what was the substance of that conversation?
He was just telling me how important this project is to the City of Tarpon Springs, and he wanted to know if I have any questions that he wanted to answer.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I spoke to Cindy Tera Paney about some of the Hayes Road specifics, and I also talked to Dr. Paul Robinson regarding traffic concerns.
Commissioner Vaticiota?
Just a couple of minutes ago, I spoke to Mr. Armstrong. I handed out an update to the conditions that are marked up, and just I know they can't be addressed this evening, but just for something in the future. I did see Mr. Tera Paney, but I didn't talk to him about the project, so.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it.
So, Mayor, at this point, there is no further public comment. The public comment was closed at five-thirty P M. Or actually, the email correspondence was closed at five-thirty P M. On January the seventh, the public was allowed the opportunity to speak at the meeting on January seventh. At the end of that, we closed the public hearing portion except for the email and correspondence, so there should be no other public input today. There should be no additional testimony or evidence put today. But once you've had the opportunity to listen to all of the emails and correspondence that was received before January seventh, the parties will have an opportunity to summarize their cases and positions, and it would start first with city staff. It would be followed by the applicant, and then followed by Concerned Citizens Group, and then one last opportunity by the developer to follow up after Concerned Citizens, and then it would come to the Commission for Consideration. So with that, Mayor, I think at this point, we could go ahead and start listening to the audio tape of the recorded emails and correspondence.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, would you start with that?
If Mr. Jump could start that, thank you.
The following emails are emails that we received to be read into the record. The first is a form letter that was sent from fifteen different people, whose names are Steven and Andrea Ford, Northlake, Dr. Paul Lewis, eight-twenty Bay Shore Drive, Kinda Coulson, Carmella and John Masek, Anna Malfa, Jenny Kelly, Mary Ann Ferretti, Sharon Swett, Tom Brady, Susan Elton, Christina M., and Rachel Townsend, nine-seventeen Lynn Harbor Court. That reads, "I request that below to be read into the record. Dear Tarpon Springs City Commissioners, in regards to the proposed development of the seventy-four acres on the Ankle River, I oppose the development of this property into a complex due to the following reasons. I object to the increase in traffic. F D O T estimates it generating four thousand additional car trips on U S Highway nineteen north daily. Residents of this development heading southbound will need to cut across both lanes of traffic to U-turn at the light on the bed by beat twenty-one. I object to the flooding caused by the proposed destruction and degradation of wetlands. I object to the proposed disturbance of two bald eagles nests. I object to the request variance to increase height restrictions on these buildings. High-rise apartment buildings do not fit the Tarpon Springs charm and character. I object to the deforestation of over a thousand trees to make room for parking lots. I object to the destruction of thirty-plus gopher tortoises that live on the site. I object to the pollution caused by parking lot runoff into the Ankle River. I propose the land be preserved as a park, public park, as originally promised by the City Commission and Mayor. Thank you for voting against this development of this property as proposed." The next is a letter from Boris Roginsky. Says, "Dear City Tarpon Springs Administration, sounds like there is a committee already formed to address the situation. There are some thoughts that we should consider as the community. We can start with public referendum with Tarpon Springs voters, with vote options for referendum votes, full rezoning of the parcel, wildlife preservation, full architectural assessment of the parcel for safe, non-invasive, and less negative impact for the community in order to use parts for the parcel for negotiations for buyout of the property for Walmart, financing with various options. There are pros and cons for each finance option. P S, this is a quick draft, which needs to be vetted and thought through details. Regards, Boris Roginsky." Next one is from Veronica Weller. Says, "Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, greetings of the season. As a resident of Tarpon Springs, I am writing to express my opposition of the Ankle Harbor's preliminary plan development and rezoning, and urge the Board to vote against this project. I am concerned with the environmental impacts related to the construction of four-hundred-plus apartments. I am opposed to the degradation of natural habitat green space that provides sanctuary to the wildlife and the deforestation of trees that will be lost to the development. Furthermore, traffic on U S Highway nineteen is already a serious challenge. Construction of the apartments would further increase traffic with detriment to the quality of life of the existing residents. There are pollution concerns as well with proximity to the Ankle River. Please vote no and tell the developer Morgan Group that residents want to retain our town's current character. I have attached a picture that I took yesterday, not far from the property, of three shore birds reflected into the water. It is a stark contrast to high-rise apartment buildings and concrete jungles. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully submitted, Veronica Weller, fifteen-sixty-three River Court." Next letter, "Forget the apartment project. The landscape cannot be replaced, ever. Alt-nineteen is already a slow-moving parking lot much of the time and does not need another busy intersection. A high-rise apartment project with no compensations for loss of view for current area residents. Why? William Carter, eight-sixteen Elkin Drive. Tarpon Springs Mayor and Commissioners, I am writing to voice my opposition to the proposed apartment development and any development considered for the land parcel near the Ankle River. The added road congestion for current residents is much more than many of us tolerate. The disturbance to the natural animal habitat that this would cause would never be overcome. You do a lasting harmful damage by allowing development to this area. Your legacy to our area as someone who appreciates Mother Nature or who is driven by the dollar lies in your vote. Respect, Susan."
The next email is from Dr. James A. Powell, eighteen-ten Longview Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. "As a veterinarian and advocate for both domestic and wildlife animals, I strongly object to allowing the beautiful pristine deeds of nature to become another ecological eyesore and disturb the eagles and tortoises living there now. Please do not allow this to happen. I live just off Pinellas Avenue and already have to look at the massive apartment complex just being completed twice daily as I commute. Please enter this message into the record of the upcoming meeting." Next email from Jennifer Winger. "As a resident of Tarpon Springs, I am officially requesting that my email be noted as opposing the development of over four-hundred-plus new apartment units near Ankle. There are many reasons this development should... But the number one reason, in my opinion, is the fact that our roads will not support the additional residents this development will bring to our small community. We do not currently have the infrastructure to support another large apartment compound in Tarpon Springs. I live off Curly Place, and there are many nights where traffic is at an absolutely standstill because of traffic merging from U S Highway nineteen and alternate nineteen, making it very difficult to access the entrance to our community. As a taxpayer, adding additional housing projects like the one proposed will eventually run many other taxpayers like myself out of a small quaint town, leaving our town with a bunch of renters who have no vested interest in our community and the town we all love. I appeal to our Mayor Commissioners to listen to the voice of the people that live right here in our community and not pick a developer and profit over what we all love about Tarpon Springs." The next email is from Dr. Joseph Delagro, three-nine-six-five-zero, U S Highway nineteen north, number five-five-three. "I am opposed to this project for the reasons already cited. And in addition, one, the proposed project will clearly reduce, quote, 'quality of life,' quote, in terms of health and well-being. Number two, there are no major, quote, benefits to this Tarpon Springs for meaning only potential disadvantages. This is not a project that enhances the social, the common good. It only seems to benefit the profit-making privateers." The next email is from G. Christman. "Enough. I have lived here for fourteen years. Our roads, especially Alt-nineteen, U S nineteen, are already way too clogged. Not as bad this year because Canadians are not here. The apartments at Meers and Alt-nineteen have not yet kicked in with their vehicles. Tarpon Springs is way overpopulated, stop." Next email is from Consul Christian Zeller. "Dear Chris Herbowski, propose the land be preserved as a public park, as originally promised by the City Commission and Mayor." The next email, "To whom it may concern. Good morning. My name is Ronald Rampkin and Lori Rampkin, seven-twenty Cypress Park Avenue. Please vote no on this proposed project, apartments for seventy-four acres on Ankle River." Next email, Nancy McLean. "Vote no. Please protect our beautiful city and our beautiful Ankle River. Please, no more apartment complexes or shopping centers. Please leave that beautiful land. Think of the wildlife, please. Sincerely, a concerned Tarpon Springs resident, Nancy McLean." Next one. "Commissioners and Mayor, re-represent the group Preserve Tarpon that educated the public about the dangers of the Wawa proposed site, Meers, and assisted the corporation in deciding not to build a convenience store or gas station on a tree-dwet land next to the water. Protest any development of a sixty-four-acre Ankle River site. We acknowledge the efforts of Tarpon Springs staff and commissioners to follow legal guidelines with development. However, we believe it is past time for you, our commissioners, to govern the present and future. Governing for the present and future means saving sites like those along the Ankle River and engaging in large-scale mitigation efforts, including tree planting there and elsewhere in Tarpon Springs. Expertise is available. Tarpon Springs could become known for its forward-looking city. Tarpon Springs is one of the most ecological, fragile places in a fragile state. Science has warned us it is time to stop building on tracts of undeveloped land and to re-force those that sit barren in an effort to save our town, our lives, and livelihoods. We ask you to focus now, respectfully yours, Jax Burke, twenty-oh-eight Gulfview Drive, Pat Burrowick, twenty-six-oh-four Oak Circle, Judith Knauft, eleven-oh-three Plum Drive, Ellen O'Hanlon, Sixon Face Way, Laura Salisbury, eight-hundred Chesapeake Drive, Marguerite Morandian, twenty-nine-oh-four Oak, Ramon Fletcher, eleven-thirty-one Ankle Road." Next letter, "To Tarpon Springs Commissioners, the W K Preservation Group has serious concerns about the proposed Ankle Harbor development. Incorporated as a nonprofit earlier this year, our mission is to preserve the rural heritage of the open-spaced land by protecting its natural forest, plant-like, and all native animals in their community. Vision accomplishing this through education and collaboration for the benefit of present and future generations. It is a great concern to us that the City of Tarpon Springs is in the process of approving this development, which is so inconsistent with the needs of the environment and so lacking in consideration of future climate change issues. Specifically, the development will greatly reduce carbon-easing trees, reduce nature wetlands, and build far too close to the tidal river in this time of increasing ocean rocks. Other issues are the increasing traffic issues and the expansion of luxury apartment living when the need county-wide is for affordable housing. We urge the Commission, if unable to deny this project, to at least table this project until it can be adequately studied from the environmental perspective. All of our lives are at stake when we reduce the positive impacts that the natural environment provides us. Thank you for your consideration. Text editor president, Brad." Siral Chair, K. Carter Treasurer, Beth Hoven Secretary, Ken Dambrosio Director, Din Reicher Director. Next email, "To whom it may concern. I ask that this email be read into the record at the meeting on Tuesday. I believe that the lands in Tarpon Springs should remain as tender natural land protected for patrons to visit the animals to live in Prosper. Growing growth of Florida has decimated natural lands and reduced access for many to experiencing the beauty of our waterways. While I value being a property owner in our wonderful city, I also value the availability of unfettered access to the natural lands around us. I recommend that the land be preserved as parklands and focus on education and conservation of the natural species that inhibit our waterways in northern Pinellas. Kindly, Jenna Sage, Ph.D." Next email is from Ms. Ramoglio. "I say no to the apartments. We have too much traffic as it is. I say yes to apartments." Next email, from Manfred Arnhider, fifteen-eighty North Jasmine Avenue. "I hereby strongly object to the proposed apartment project since this would mean to destroy one of the few left areas where wildlife can survive. The major of Tarpon Springs promised to have it turned into a park. Major. Please stick to your promise. We, the citizens of Tarpon Springs, would love to believe that you are a leader who is trustworthy." Next email, Joy Endemic, six-twenty-six River Village Drive. "I have been a resident of Tarpon Springs since nineteen seventy-eight. I have been a homeowner since nineteen ninety. I completely object to building apartments, and I'm making it private property on U S nineteen where Walmart was attempting to build a new store. One of my main reasons is the eagles nests out there. They are protected, and they should be protected. This is a law and is a fact. They are breeding right now, and there are many of them out there. I feel the noise factor would be bad for the people around here, especially since it is on the water and the noise echoes from the water. I also believe the flooding issues would be terrible, and the pollution problems would be crazy terrible. Please do not build property on this land. In my opinion, there should be a public park and preserve as this is the last pristine land left in Tarpon Springs. Thank you for listening." The next email, Bruce J. Edwards. "Dear Town Representatives, please do not approve this complex here in Tarpon Springs. This type of mass development is not needed in Tarpon Springs and will negatively impact those who already live here. I, as many others in town, do not want this as it hurts the environment and disturbs animal habitats, not to mention the increase in traffic that our roads cannot handle. I fear our services will also suffer due to this mass development. Please advise that you will stop this development and keep the town that we have come to know and love." Next email is from Corinne Lillis, three-oh-six-five-zero, U S Highway nineteen north, unit one-three-one. "Good day. I am a Tarpon Springs resident. I am writing to voice my strong objection to the proposed apartment complex on the Ankle River. I completely agree with all of the points in Chris Herbowski's email reference below. Destruction of wetlands, disturbing wildlife, increased flooding, and the additional traffic would net the impact of Tarpon Springs. There seems to be a number of unused slash vacant properties in the city that could be repurposed to apartments without destroying the green space forever. A public park for recreation would be much better use of that land for all of the public and future generations. I hit the Tarpon Tampa Bay Times, and I did receive the email. However, it seems that there should be a great deal more attention paid to this matter so that all residents could weigh in. We just had an election. Wouldn't it be appropriate for a project of this scope and impact to be placed on the ballot for the citizens to decide? The project would be a great loss to Tarpon Springs, and I sincerely hope and expect that the personal relationships of the parties involved will not impact this decision." Next email, "Our family have lived in Tarpon Springs since nineteen seventy-six. We don't regret people wanting to move to our lovely little town. The development of every square inch of luxury apartment has to stop until the infrastructure is brought up to handle traffic. Alternate nineteen is a disaster, and the impact on the environment and the Ankle River is a major factor. Also, the influx of homeless, so sad, needs to be addressed. David and Judy Sheets." Next email, "To whom it may concern. As a resident of Riverwatch Community, Tarpon Springs, I must state I am against the four-hundred apartment development on the Ankle River. The impact on the river will be horrendous. The channels of the river in this area are already very restricted and in low tide, non-negotiable in some areas. The additional potential runoff and destruction to the area will only worsens the issue. Additionally, the environmental impact on wildlife should be a factor, not only the gopher turtle and eagle issues, but the raccoons, possums, and deers are already being pushed out of their shelter, the yards and traffic of the community. Traffic on U S nineteen is already a problem getting in the turn lane. Unless there is a flyover plan, anticipated traffic increase will quickly become a safety issue." Eileen Arnold, seventeen-oh-one Riverwatch. The next email is from Glenn Pierce. "He objects to proposed four-hundred-unit apartment development on the Ankle River, Glenn Pierce, fourteen-oh-two Kimberly Lane, Tarpon Springs." Next email, "I am unable to attend the meeting on this project in person, but would like my email to be read into the record at the meeting. As a thirteen-year resident in Tarpon Springs community, I am very concerned about the proposed four-hundred apartment community that is under construction for the Tarpon Springs Ankle River property. I firmly believe this apartment development should not be considered. I feel that there is already a tremendous amount of traffic on U S nineteen and nearby intersections. This proposed project would heighten the congestion..." This proposed project would heighten the congestion and increase the potential for more accidents on the nearby roads. I also have concerns regarding the wildlife habitats that are rarely in existence in the proposed property, including the two bald eagle's nest and the 30-plus gopher tortoise nesting site. The gopher tortoise is currently protected by federal law under the Endangered Species Act and categorized as threatened species with lots of habitat as a primary reason for being endangered. I certainly can't imagine how 400-plus apartment community would enhance the lives of the residents in Tarpon Springs community, especially would not enhance the fragile ecosystem of the bald eagles and gopher tortoises who currently call this property home. Why not take a step in the right direction and preserve this beautiful natural wetlands and show that Tarpon Springs is concerned about the environmental and animal habitats? Did you know that wetlands could be considered biological supermarkets? Because of the volume of food that can attract animal species, wouldn't it be great addition to Tarpon Springs community to make this an area park as the mayor previously agreed to do for the enjoyment of the community? Thank you for your consideration. Terry Lynn Stum, 2630 Richard Road, Tarpon Springs. Next email. My name is David Weisner. My family and I are citizens of Tarpon Springs with address at 1730 Gulf Beach Boulevard. I support turning the land on the river that was a former site of the Walmart into a park. That is the perfect location for a park as it is right on the river and provides a beautiful site for the community, for R and R. Please make the right decision. Part of the community sincerely, David Weisner.
The next email is from Rodney Hardy, 30650 Tarpon Springs, Florida. Dear Mayor Commissioners of Tarpon Springs, I am not in favor of the proposed apartment development on the Ankle River. I was a citizen of Walmart back in 2004. US-19 traffic is congested enough in that area and has the potential for increased cars entering or departing the property. The scenic view of the river and wooded area was lost. Land was to be preserved as a park back during the time of the Walmart proposal, what happens to that promise? As a lifelong resident of Tarpon Springs, I used to play and fish along that area of the river. Let's not lose the beauty and quality of life along the river. Let's not destroy the natural beauty that God has given to the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you. Next email is from Dean Delaba. To whom it may concern, I have lived in the charming Tarpon Springs since 2012. Please, please do not allow a high-rise Ankle. Destroying the trees, greenery, disrupting the animals, and possible. We do not need a high-rise with more traffic, pollution, etc. My vote would be a no, just as in the Walmart issue. Thank you for your time. Next email is from Crystal Baker. You are disturbing more wildlife. You are creating more. You are doing this for your own agenda. Please, please, Tarpon Springs citizens, we did not move here to this beautiful community to look at eyesore apartments. We already have an eyesore from the abandoned buildings where the old Kmart was. New apartment building by Winn-Dixie was unnecessary. I urge you to reconsider your vote if thinking of a yes. This is a bad idea. No one wants this. Concerned citizens of Tarpon Springs. Next email. Ally. As a resident and registered voter of Tarpon Springs, opposed to the development of the land located on 74 acres along the Ankle River, I have been a supporter of the mayor and board in general. You are already aware of the negative impact, life, waterway, traffic, etc., but consideration that this has made its way to the newspapers and now going through social media where your constituents are finding out this and growing angry about it rapidly. There's no support for this within the community at all. As we have seen this year, once you lose the support of your community, they decide to turn against their government. We go from quaint town to draw straws to some place people won't want because of protesting and negative news. I do not want to live in a town like that. Please stop us in this trap. Next email. B Spencer, Ankle River resident. I am reaching out to support the effort not to develop a land with luxury apartments on the Ankle River at US-19. Luxury apartments in that area in a struggling economy is not feasible. The traffic pattern on 19 does not safely meet the volume of residents proposed. Every day there are multiple accidents on US-19 on that stretch of road, to the point that a brand-new 24-bay collision shop is being built just north of Pinellas County line. These apartments will impact valuable ecosystems necessary to the health and beauty of the waterways and contribute more noise and pollution to an animal haven. Hundreds of trees and fauna will be cut down to make room for this albatross. I do not agree with this project. We do not need more housing, let alone on a beautiful and flourishing waterway, for this is a greed profit and poor judgment by the president. Ignore the Ankle River apartments.
Next email. I am deeply opposed to the destruction of open space for an apartment complex. Keeping it undeveloped with unpaid trails and a canoe kayak launch on a river would keep a bit of wild Florida easily accessible to the residents of Tarpon Springs. I'd also like to point out that across from this is yet another failed development on the river, but the apartments put the apartments there. Also, how about doing something with the vacant strip mall behind roadies? That's been an eyesore since I moved here four years ago. Focus on rehabbing the rundown places, not ripping up the undeveloped places. Christine Gasko, 1615 Stonehaven Way. Next email. We would be very disappointed to have the area in question be developed. We fully agree with all of Chris's points. We have lived in Tarpon for 46 years and we are tired of seeing all available land turned into apartments and housing developments. I was upset when the land between Winn-Dixie was recently developed. I used to observe an alligator in the pond that was on the property, plus enjoyed seeing people fish in the same pond, not to mention the loss of many trees. The property on US-19 is a beautiful sight. Please do not allow it to be ripped up, built on, and paved. Thank you, Patsy and Hayden Allen. Next email. Whom this may concern, please find this email in reference to 74 acre property being considered for development into an apartment structure. I have a list of comments to this, pertaining to the concerns for flooding, height restrictions, deforestation, disturbance of the natural habitat, and protected animals that reside there, and most importantly, the pollution that a structure of the magnitude allows to our water system. First off, the Ankle River is considered an impaired water system with state. The listed impairments include mercury levels found in fish tissue, nitrogen, blast, enter The latter is impairment relates directly to the amount of fecal material within the Ankle River exceeding normal limits. The Ankle River is currently undergoing restoration of these impairments. Should this property be populated by hundreds of people, I fear this waterway will no longer be something the citizens of Tarpon Springs can safely enjoy. Secondly, the deforestation and damage to the natural habitats of protected species, including bald eagles, is unthinkable. Gopher tortoises also re-land and require relocating prior to land clearing, but tell me how often that measure is taken. It would be an atrocity to destroy a beautiful piece of land and the animals who call it home for the development of apartment buildings, particularly in light of the apartment buildings that were just constructed off Alt-Antique and Mayor Boulevard. How much beautiful land are we willing to sacrifice? Lastly, we are a coastal city. Largely, we are a coastal city that is not made of money. We grossly house blue collar residents. Unfortunately, we have put forth minimal efforts to assist in protecting our beautiful city from the changes of our eroding ozone layer and increasing water level. Destroying the root system of the natural habitat would only pose increased flooding risk, not to mention deforestation to cool us down on those hot Florida days. As a born and raised resident at Tarpon Springs since 1991, I would hate to see the city I know and love become just like every other overrun city. We have so much uniqueness, nature, and culture to offer. Why dilute it and replicate every other community in the nation? We could focus on preserving this beautiful piece of our wonderful city. Converting it to a park would be ideal. People travel all over the nation and world to enjoy our beaches and parks. Why not give them another slice of paradise to enjoy? Thank you, Maria Sembarlis, 512 River View, Tarpon Springs. Next email. As a Tarpon Springs resident for over six years, both myself and my family strongly feel that this land should be preserved as a public park rather than gaudy high-rise apartment that could add hundreds of cars to the already frustrating building up in the traffic on 19. For traffic reasons as well as for aesthetic reasons, this land should stay as it is as much as possible. Florida is a beautiful place and there's not many beautiful places left to preserve. This land area is unique to our environment and as a community, we should be proud of it and preserve it as well as animals or wildlife that may reside there. I object to any development on land. My community feels the same way. Thank you, Victoria D. Giovanni, 1721 Dixie Highway, Tarpon Springs. Next email. I am writing to express the strong opposition of my wife and I to the proposed development of an apartment complex on the ground of the nature preserve near Ankle River in Tarpon Springs. We have a multitude of concerns, including the destruction of wildlife habitat, potential for increased pollution of the river, negative impact on the serenity of walking neighborhood, the heavy impact on traffic. We strongly support the development of the park that would retain the existing wildlife and allow the site to be enjoyed by the public. Chuck and Janet Hanson, 425 Mariner Drive.
Next email is from Kristen Hall. Good morning. I request that this email be read into the record. As a resident, proper donor, and taxpayer, I'm requesting that the over 400-plus new apartment units near Ankle be denied. I would rather have space to be used as a public, which was originally promised to be. I think the additional traffic the apartments would cause would be too much for our quaint town. More important, the forestation of over 1,000 trees, destruction of the animals that live on site, and the pollution this development would cause are a major cause of concern. Next email from Barbara Cook Mademoiselle, 424 Fort. As a concerned citizen of Tarpon Springs, I strongly object to the proposed development of the green space on the Ankle River being addressed during tonight's agenda. My objection is based on my belief that Pinellas County has enough housing as it stands. Pinellas County is currently one of the most densely populated in the state. We do not have or are enough of the open space that I was privileged enough to experience as a child growing up here. I would strongly ask that the funding be to purchase it for a public park with amenities such as nature trails, guided educational hikes, kayak slips, native plant parks, possibly even a nature center that could be staffed by volunteers while adding funds for maintenance and future additions. As a member of the friend of the island parks where 1,000 or 100 volunteers perform multiple roles in just such actions for honeymoon, calabasas, and clothe islands, I pledge my time and energy to help organizing such a group specific to this area. If funding is found to make this property be considered for further destruction of natural habitat into one of public recreational use, it would become a jewel in the heart of Tarpon Springs for generations to come, rather than adding another housing development that future crowds, that further crowds are always adds to noise, environmental pollution, and strains on our local utilities and hospitals. Please recognize the opportunity that lies in your hands to add to the charm and uniqueness of our beautiful waters. Next email. Julia Sockel Bart. Please do not destroy the irreplaceable sensitive habitat that provides tremendous ecological benefits to both humans and wildlife. We need preservation of our rivers to sustain healthy estuaries, fisheries, community health, and a tourist economy. The development of Ankle Harbors will additionally become a traffic nightmare. This is lose-lose for all and most certainly would put liability for traffic accident fatalities incurred by poor planning on both the county and developers. Next email from Angela Wilson. Dear Sir and Madam, I am writing to express my strong opposition to allowing the development of the proposed Ankle Harbor apartment complex. I ask please read my reel into the record at the meet of December 15, 2020. My primary concern is the loss of wildlife, loss of habitat, and pollution entering Ankle River that this development would cause. This development will cause 1,000 trees to be cut down for parking lots and will destroy the habitats of all wildlife in the area. More than 30 gopher tortoises live on site and this development will destroy their homes. According to Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, gopher tortoises are keystone species, meaning that many other species depend on them to live. They play an important part in the ecosystem and over 350 species share their burrows, which would be destroyed and cause them to be displaced. The development also disturbed two bald eagle nests. The US Fish and Wildlife Service states bald eagles return to the same nest and territory each year. Altering the nest site can interfere with normal breeding, feeding, or sheltering habitats and can cause injury, death, or nest abandonment. Runoff for the parking lot will cause pollution to enter the Ankle River and the destruction of wetlands will increase problems with flooding. Additionally, this development does not fit into the predominantly residential, perim, single, and two-family homes in the surrounding neighborhoods. Ours is a city of homes as opposed to condos slash apartment developments. Many would like to keep it this way. High-rise apartment buildings do not fit with the charm and character of Tarpon Springs. As residents of the city, I believe we have a duty to keep it beautiful and preserve the charm. It is estimated that this development will generate 4,000 additional car trips on US-19 daily. I am opposed to the major increase in traffic that this development will bring. If you live in Tarpon Springs, you already know there is an issue with traffic in the city. This proposal is at odds with what makes Tarpon Springs a beautiful place to live and raise children. This development will not benefit current residents of Tarpon Springs and will deserve and we deserve to be considered. This development is heartbreaking. This land should be preserved as a public park as originally promised by the city commissioner and mayor. Anything else is a disservice to this community. Next email. Steve Arnett. We have more than enough apartments and traffic caused by them to retain green space.
Next email. Dear Board of Commissioners, I have lived in Tarpon Springs since September 2002 and remember when Walmart wanted to build a new store on the same property. It was not a good idea then and is not a good idea now. Building apartments on this land will not serve the public interest. The land should be public park in order to preserve wetlands and threaten an endangered species, bald eagles and gopher tortoises and their habitat, and to protect the waters of the Ankle River from runoff pollution from parking lots and increased traffic. If the proposed apartments are built, it will destroy wetlands and harm threatened endangered species and/or impair their critical habitat. The foregoing proposed apartment construction and occupancy will become the new baseline for future development and is essentially irreversible in nature. I, it can be restored or undone for the foreseeable future. Please read this email into the record. Thank you very respectfully, David Key, CEP Emeritus. Next email. This is becoming insanity. You must use reason and admit that there is no room for cars or people and preserve what we have with no further development. Think of peace and preservation and not just profit. Thank you, Angela Crinzelak. Next email. To whom it may concern, I cherish the flora and fauna of Florida and it is being destroyed. Develop one of the empty abandoned strips or buildings have become a blight and save the green space for our beautiful city. We desperately need the oxygen, the plants, the turtles, the eagles, the owls, and the nature to live. Be well, have a beautiful day. Eros, Bone Giovanni, 389 Woodbridge Avenue. Next email. Good morning. I would like to register my objection to construction of a new apartment complex on the Ankle River, 19 land previously owned by Walmart. This land is better suited for preservation. Furthermore, I see high-density development in Tarpon Springs without adequate infrastructure plans for traffic, sewage, water, schools, emergency fire, and police services, hospital services, etc. Tarpon Springs government needs increased infrastructure before considering approval of a high-density living complexes anywhere in the city and those associated costs should be shouldered by the developers, not the general community. Best regards, John Donnell. Next email. Leave the Ankle land alone. We won't have any nature left if this short-term greed drain continues. You turned down use of this land years ago for school, but it's fine to put up expensive apartments. Dollar sign, dollar sign. Double standards should not be what Tarpon is about. Dollar sign, dollar sign. Double standards should not be what Tarpon is about. If you're responsible, stop rationalizing and learn how to experience a little bit of Schwab.
Next email, Kasha Negurka. Hello, I'm writing this email to oppose a four hundred plus apartment complex on the Anclot River in Tarpon Springs. Is there a shortage of housing available in the area? Does the little green space still left have to be developed into yet another unaffordable apartment complex, especially when the nearby area apartment complex sits less than half occupied? I oppose this project due to the negative impact it will have on nature, current destruction of trees, wildlife, contamination of the surrounding bodies of water. Close print. Not to mention the community due to increased traffic congestion and longer commute times affecting quality family time and personal quality of life. If you really care and want to do something beneficial for the Tarpon Springs community, then please develop space into a beautiful park where kids can go out and be kids and families can enjoy quality time together that is so desperately needed by kids and families. Next email, Tammy Walker, seven eighty-one Brittany Park Boulevard. I wish to strongly to any plans to build apartments on the land that Walmart bought years ago on the Anclot River. I live in Brittany Park and thus drive by that property daily. I believe that more than ten years that land should remain undeveloped and I believe that now. The building of four hundred apartments on that land, no matter how green the developers attempt to be, would negatively impact the environment. Additionally, the traffic on this stretch of U.S. nineteen from Beckett like to spruce by Lowe's is already horrific. According, adding to it and forcing residents in the apartments to have to do U-turns makes no sense. Please do not allow any building on that property and please pursue using that property as a city or county park. Next email. Uh, Dee Isugu, Isuguzar. Absolutely not. We do not support. We need to preserve the wildlife and please do not allow. We moved to Tarpon Springs because it's quaint, small-town feel and beauties and beautiful trees, etc. We do not need any more apartments like the one on Pinellas that is going to cause more traffic and pollution to our area. Next email from Lisa Watson, Riverwatch subdivision. I'm emailing you this as a resident of Tarpon Springs since nineteen ninety-nine and a Pinellas County resident my whole life. The land in Tarpon Springs off U.S. nineteen needs to be left alone or maybe a park. We do not need any more apartment complex and we do not need more traffic. I live off U.S. nineteen at the Pasco line and traffic in evening makes it almost impossible for me to get out of my neighborhood at six P.M. when I have to go to work. I can't imagine even bringing more traffic on U.S. nineteen in evenings. The land needs to be safe for wildlife and to keep the river safe from pollution that will be caused by building apartments with roadways to drive around these places. This land has been left alone all this time and needs to continue that way. No more apartments.
Next email. Your honors and fellow residents of Tarpon Springs, I must enter my objection regarding the proposal to build an apartment complex in the area of discussion. Now, Tarpon Springs is a haven for many visitors and residents. If we overpopulate it with staff residences, we will lose the charm and hospitable accommodations. We should not be so shortsighted as to think life will be better for us if we add four to twenty thousand people and cars are already over busy little streets and roads as well as U.S. nineteen. Apartment complex along the Anclot River besides U.S. nineteen literally guarantees an eventual increase in misdemeanor crimes, depression, depressed commercial real estate and statistical undesired invitabilities which will crop up as the ripple effect reach out into the future. Do we really believe we need more strip malls? Residential development as sure as drugs follow demand. Development begins with demolition of the natural world. It doesn't matter your side, opinion, or desires. Mankind must destroy to create. In a public forum such as this, a desire to build residences on the river is an open statement of disregard for the health of the land and waters. We need money and temporary jobs more than a planet to live on. We have lost touch with the nature of life itself. Greed is only ever destructive. No one can overlook the claims of greenwashing developers and suppliers of the eventual management companies that will eyes into forever dwindling corporate paychecks. You simply cannot preserve while you destroy. You cannot build on the riverfront and tell any of us that the river has nothing to do with your plans to charge rents that financially disqualify renters. The perception of growth is not synonymous with success. If we wish to be successful, we must first demonstrate our leadership as citizens in the preservation of the environment for its our young people. I look at eco-friendly developments like boot ranch apartments along the Tarpon Canal to safety harbor properties that change hands regularly for the next available management companies to exploit. I do not see sustainable value. Shopping carts from nearby strip malls ejected into that canal do not provide natural homes for fish and other aquatic earthlings. We cannot convince ourselves that a few leasing agents and long-term contracted landscapers represent significant long-term employment either. This would be one-off enrichment project designed to attract unaware with a temptation of goods that cannot be delivered beyond twenty-four to forty-eight months once the residences are populated. The next move will be to depreciate the property so that they and subsequent management companies can pay lower occupancy and property taxes. The time for us to rely on short-term gains is beyond its end. Each decision we make affects our futures and are unable to forecast. When we destroy the natural world, we destroy ourselves. When we accept promises in exchange of actual value, we exchange our futures for the now. Brett Self. Next email. To whom it may concern, my name is Douglas Sam Carey and I moved to Tarpon Springs two years ago. I love the parks here. I love seeing all the unique wildlife in my backyard. My wife and I moved to Tarpon Springs from Wellington, Florida in twenty eighteen. We left Wellington due to the overcrowdedness, traffic, tons of construction, lack of parks, greenery. When I moved to Wellington back in two thousand and four, it was a beautiful town with lots of farmland and trees. The logo for the city of Wellington was befitting because it was trees. Now I think they should change it to apartment buildings, shopping malls. When I heard about this cloak, I said to my wife, here we go again. Someone is looking to destroy the community all for profit and line their pockets. The location would make a great park with more exciting things to do in Tarpon Springs. If is, if it means raising our taxes to have a park instead of another apartment complex, then do so. I really hope you do not do the same thing to Tarpon Springs as what the city council did to Wellington. Do not destroy this beautiful piece of Tarpon Springs. Please strongly consider making this a park and say Tarpon Springs. Regards, Douglas Sing and Denise Sam Carey, seven nineteen Cash you put loop. Next email. I respectfully submit my opinion on this subject. Park green spaces preferred to apartments. We do not need more housing in Tarpon Springs, which only leads to more congestion on the streets and our stores. Barbara Huber. Next email. Dear Commissioners and Mayor, I want to express my opposition to include Harbor Apartment Complex due to obvious environmental wildlife impacts that we are all aware of. This one of the last, this is one of the last remaining undisturbed areas along Anclot River and Tarpon. Why are we not working together towards preservation and not development? This is a perfect location for a park given its close proximity to the Pinellas Trail and to North Anclot River Park. Visitors and tourists to Tarpon Springs are attracted to our fabulous parks and waterways. And we all know that the citizen Tarpon would overwhelmingly support a park over this development. Not only that, but a park will attract more visitors to Tarpon, add to our property values, and overall make Tarpon Springs a more attractive place to live, visit, and work. To summarize, a park would provide more revenue to Tarpon and tourists and tax dollars and is a long-term investment to Tarpon Springs. I also want to add that as a homeowner who resides on Jasmine Avenue, a second entrance exit from Hayes Road to Jasmine Avenue should not be considered now or in the future. Jasmine Avenue is supposed to be a small coun- country road and is currently cannot, and currently cannot handle the ex- exponential growth that we have seen over the past several years. The results of this growth has been increased traffic accidents, racing, and noise pollution. About five years ago, Jasmine had a new condominium complex built, which is still ongoing construction site, that we had the opening of Spruce Road and now we have the expansion of Psychedea Cemetery, which is still an ongoing construction site. This increased growth from a traffic perspective was not thought out properly from the beginning. No consideration was given to adding traffic lights at the intersection of Spruce and Jasmine or at Melon Jasmine, nor were any additional sidewalks added near athletic and cemeteries where pedestrians are dangerously forced to walk along the shoulder. Additionally, where the Pinellas Trails cross Jasmine, closed calls with pedestrians and cyclists occur on an almost daily basis. Commercial vehicles also continue to illegally use Spruce Jasmine as a cut-through from U.S. nineteen to Tarpon Avenue. Large trailers are unable to make a wide enough onto Jasmine and oftentimes end up on the trail or in the path of incoming traffic. Jasmine Avenue is also full of potholes and bumps, especially where the new cemetery construction has taken place and has yet to be properly repaired. These are the reasons why second entrance exit onto Jasmine is a very bad and dangerous idea. Fortunately, I think that developer agrees with that one entrance exit onto nineteen, but I would like to set this option removed for consideration. Sincerely, Jamie Perry. Next email. I will like to vote no, no more apartments, put the boat ramp there. That better than the apartments, a skate park for kids, canoe, kayaks, bikes, etc. Joseph Reese.
Next email, Mike Dixon. I vote for a park with boat ramp. We do not need more apartment complexes. Next email, James J. Spinolas Esquire, three fifteen Affen Street. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I am sure you will be hearing a lot of comments about the proposed Anclot Harbors project. So I will keep my comment short. Like many other people, my main focus is on the tra- the traffic study submitted by the applicant is incomplete. Further, the traffic study submitted shows that intersections in the area are already rated F. What is the point of having traffic studies and grading systems if we are not, if we are going to ignore them when it comes time to add development? A National Highway Safety Administration study shows the stretch of U.S. nineteen to Pinellas to average approximately fifty-two deaths a year. Yes, it will be a nice, yes, it will be nice to clean up the property, but not at the cost of an increase in fatal accidents. Thank you. Next email, Kevin Chaney. I have been a resident of Tarpon Springs since two thousand and eight. Tarpon Springs and Pinellas County need to preserve natural lands. There are plenty of sites that can be reasoned for apartment buildings. Please vote no on development. Next email, John Diarizo, eight fourteen Unis Drive. Dear Mayor, Commissioners, I object to the proposed four hundred plus apartments on the Anclot River due to the environmental and traffic impact it will have. These apartments should not be approved. Maybe the city and or county should look at acquiring this property and turning it into to enjoy. Next email, Pat. Pat and Eileen Diacomo, seven forty-seven Cashaput Loop. To whom it may concern, my family and I started our search for a diamond in the rough almost three years ago. We would drive up and down the west coast of Florida to find the perfect place to call home. We visited Cape Coral, Fort Charlotte, and Sarasota, a few. None of these places and all the small towns in between had nothing Tarpon Springs, nothing on Tarpon Springs. Why? It's only a question that an outsider might be able to answer because people who have been born and raised here might forget the reason why Tarpon is that in the rough. The amazing neighborhoods within Tarpon Springs in themselves make it warm and genuine. To go down Alt nineteen from the start of SpongeBob to Stafford Avenue is what a small-town feeling is all about. Going down Tarpon Avenue to South Walton is also so exciting to see all those small businesses. If you want to invest in Tarpon Springs, then that is where investment should be applied. More restaurants to bring more revenue, the empty strip mall near Mercer Building is more stores to fill the empty ones. That is an investment in the people and the future of Tarpon. Tarpon has so much more that I cannot express all of it. From Fred Howard to Craig Park, First Friday, which really you need to bring back and everything in between. My family and I were not here ten years ago to fight the complex that you put up at that in health. We are now, we are here now and another complex has no business in a community like Tarpon Springs. You are the governing body of this community, should vote against it. Don't make the same mistake twice. Remember, when a gem cutter makes a mistake on the diamond, it's worthless. If you vote for this project, you're making the voice of this community worthless and greed of the government body and who is connected to the project more apparent of your motive. Remember, the people will have their voices heard when election day comes around and they will remember who did the right thing and who did the wrong thing. Thank you and please vote no. We could use more parks. Not another monolith.
Next email. I oppose this project for Anclot Harbors Apartments. There is enough apartments around here. Traffic would be a nightmare. Joseph Richards, fifteen ten Club Drive. Next email. I vote no. We need parkland and not to disturb the nature of this beautiful area. Karen Caddy, one nineteen Athenian Way, Tarpon Springs. Next email. Good morning. My name is Theodore Strechar. I live at ten oh seven Sawgrass Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I live less than a half a mile from the proposed apartments. I'm a military retiree and drive from beautiful Tarpon Springs to MacDill Air Force Base every day. There are accidents on Route nineteen every day. It's, it's a terrible route of travel. Having to make a U-turn on all, on nineteen from Riverwatch every day is dangerous enough without more traffic congestion. Prior to the opening of apartments in Alt nineteen, the city commission forced Mears Extension Project to be opened first. We also have an auto collision center opening right behind the house. My beautiful neighborhood is being swallowed. This proposed land is beautiful land that should be preserved. Tarpon Springs does not need more apartments on the Anclot River. Preserve the land, make green space, residents exercise joy, the eagles and river. This has nothing to do with what's good for the city. We don't need a group from Houston to come develop our land. This is pure greed that doesn't benefit the people of Tarpon Springs. I wish you would sincerely reconsider. Thank you for your time. TJ Strechar. Next email. Dear Commissioners, there's so many reasons for you to oppose the building of these new apartments. We can start with the environment and the amount of natural habitats will be destroyed. I know that it's being said that all precautions are being taken, but you and I both know that won't matter and the animal homes will either be abandoned or destroyed. The traffic on nineteen, especially in the area, is horrific and amount of accidents, the amount of speeding and amount of traffic is already way too high. If you add more apartments to this area and on this road, you will be asking for more accidents and more injuries. There are plenty of empty apartments around this area. They need to be filled up prior to any land being broken to build more. My name is Kelly Strecharst and I live at ten zero seven Sawgrass Drive, Tarpon Springs. If you decide to build these apartments and vote for this, I hope you're planning on voting for more stoplights. The fact, all the people living in these apartments, they need to drive south and nineteen will have to cut across three lanes of traffic and you do U-turns should be a huge red flag to the hazards of that is be smart and vote no for these apartments, please. Kelly. Next email, no, 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 no apartments. Build a park as promised. I have a homeowner, I am a homeowner in that that area. Protect it. Also, what about distant? Get it open. Peace. George Chase, ninety South Highland Avenue, number three one two. Next email, I oppose this project. Please do not forward and sell out Tarpon Springs like Nick Milano, ten zero one South Pointless Drive, Tarpon Springs.
Next email, Jennifer Callahan, two thirty Ruud Dominion, Montreal, Quebec, Canada. To whom it may concern, please vote no on the apartment building project planned to go along the Anclot River. This is an ecological, this is an ecologically important wetland that will be impacted by a large development such as the four hundred and four unit complex we discussed. I'm a wildlife biologist, grew up in the Bay Area and am familiar with the sensitivity of the area. My husband and I come back to visit regularly, drawn in large parts of the natural beauty and unfold the natural set areas of that make Tarpon Springs unique. There are many alternative spaces locally that could be developed with a much smaller biological impact. biological impact. Please consider that Tarpon Springs' pristine natural areas provide an immeasurable intrinsic value and valuable ecosystem services such as water filtration and floodwater storage capacity. These services and the recreational opportunities this area provides are likely more valuable than what the proposed project will provide. Next email. Colleen Caldwell, 90 South Highland Avenue, number 1406. I want to express my disappointment with the city for allowing the wetlands and habitats and health destroyed, as well as approving such a large apartment complex on our small roads. Now, I read to utter, to my utter disgust, we are receiving a high-rise apartment complex on the Anclot River site. At what point do we finally stand up to the greed of developers and put our quality of life first? Is it bad enough we ended our tree removal, Freddy, and now we want to further overpopulate our community? I suggest the City Commission study the communities where building moratoriums are in place. Green spaces are a priority and protected, and infrastructure is sustainable. These are the communities people want to live in, where housing values are increased and visitors attracted, not to a town overcrowded, filled with, filled with traffic and subsequent pollution. Florida is just not about our beaches. In our household, we object to the increase in traffic. FDOT estimates it generating four thousand additional car trips on US-19 daily. Residents of this development heading southbound will need to cut across four lanes of traffic to U-turn at light at Beckett. We object to the flooding caused by the proposed destruction and degradation of wetlands. We object to the proposed disturbance of two bald eagles. We object to the requested variance to increase height restrictions on these buildings. High-rise apartment comp buildings do not fit with Tarpon Springs' charm and character. We object to the deforestation where were thousand trees to make room for parking lots. We object to the destruction, destruction of thirty-plus gopher tortoises that live on-site. We object to the pollution caused by parking lot runoff into the Anclot River. Next email. Elizabeth Kiphorn, 720 North Avenue. Good afternoon, I'd like to add my two cents, please. I do not think our city needs more apartments, most specifically where they are proposed to be put. If that property was a gopher tortoise habitat fifteen years ago, it still is. We have new apartments besides Winn-Dixie and Mango Circle will also be opening soon. We don't want more apartments that no one can afford. If you must build, then build them on the plaza of the Old Winn-Dixie and remove the ice store that currently sits there. Thank you. Next email, Gabe Colino. No more building on Anclot.
Next email. To whom it may concern, I am writing to share my concern regarding a new apartment complex up for consideration. I have lived in Tarpon Springs since 1995. My family moved here because we loved the small-town quality of life that it offered. Additional apartments will cause increased traffic, increased crowding, and increased burden on the already crowded schools and disturbance of the local wildlife and their habitats, which in turn will ruin the charm and beauty of Tarpon Springs. Thank you. Nicole Boyle, 1606 Avoca Drive. Next email. I have been a resident supporter of Tarpon Springs area since 1994. I cannot support turning the seventy-four acre property on the east side of US-19 and the south banks of the Anclot River into another apartment complex. The recreational needs of residents and area visitors, as well as wetlands, bald eagle homes, oak forests, and gopher tortoise home are much more valuable than piling more housing or development of any kind there. I support finding the means to keep this property in the public trust as a, and connecting it to park property on the other side of US-19, and urge you will work to, for fulfilling this goal. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jacqueline Matthews. Next email. Dear Mayor, I am incredibly upset that this property is again under attack and has not been purchased, protected by Tarpon Springs and Pinellas County. I aided in the fight against several years ago to keep Walmart from destroying this habitat. It is distressing to know that the city has done nothing to correct zoning and purchase this property in the meantime. Residents join in opposition to protect. It is the duty of the city officials to listen and do something about that problem. Allowing it to sit idle, knowing full well that the same problem will occur again in the future, is not leadership or good stewardship. I see that a city leader that fought the Walmart building has now changed side and is promoting this project. Shameful, city leaders have always seemed to only be interested in the Sponge Docks area, some of them having business interests there, while totally ignoring that Tarpon has the magnificent river running through it. When the eastern portion of the river gets destroyed and polluted, it will affect the docks as well. Do you not care about the future? It is your duty to protect this pristine property and its wildlife, wetlands, habitat, and trees. This county is topped out, overbuilt, and the quality of life for current residents has been ruined. Every day on our roads, there is canard. Just yesterday on US-19, there was a nine-car pileup and sixteen people to the hospital. Now you want to permit more housing, people in cars, endangering them and everyone else by forcing them to make U-turns in and out of this project. Please realize that the future is preservation, no longer unending, mindless building and paving over everything. Please deny this project and rezone this land to preservation. Name it, it the Walmart Preserve if you have to, but work something out with them and the county to save this habitat and protect the beautiful Anclot. Sincerely, Sharon McGauley. Next email. Please do not allow this wonderful natural area to be destroyed. We need more parks and nature preserves. Saving this land is beneficial to both people and nature. I regularly visit your parks and always include stopping in to eat and shop in Tarpon Springs. I'm local, but out of town, ecotourism visitors will spend even more money while visiting with the additional nature area. The city of Tarpon Springs needs to maintain its charm and environmentally friendly natural surroundings. Make Tarpon Springs an even greater destination for tourists by preserving this natural treasure. Next email. Dear Commissioners and city staff, while we understand that balancing the need for new housing and environmental impacts is a difficult task, we implore you to preserve and protect these sensitive wetlands and habitats that are so rare and cherished in our country or county. The disastrous repercussions of developing wetlands can be avoided, but only rarely do you have such an opportunity like this to protect the fragile wildlife and precious river ecosystem at this scale. We propose land served as a park to be enjoyed by our fellow residents and for future generations to come. Thank you. Scott Bertelli, CDT PVC Sierra Club.
Next email from Maggie Philippi. Dear Board of Commissioners, our community of Sail Harbor is a quiet one surrounded by the joys of nature. We are concerned for the deer in our area, which we've seen grow from fawns to adulthood, and then bring up family of their own. We also have the pleasure of seeing tortoises, rabbits, rosiates, spoonbill, sandhill cranes, and even the family of bald eagles. All of these precious animals live in wetlands surrounding the community, and it would be disheartening to see their homes destroyed. We love this area because of the quietness and the, you see all kinds of creatures come and go. The prettiest part of Jasmine Avenue is just past the bike trail where the road winds around into Sail Harbor. You can see alligators in the retention pond and all kinds of different birds. It's a peaceful drive. This serenity is also found as you kayak or boat along the Anclot River. Where you once saw old trees covered with moss and eagles soaring, we will, we will see tall buildings and parking lots. Where you once heard of sounds of birds singing, dolphins jumping, and gentle waves of break- gentle waves breaking upon the shore, you will hear more traffic sounds, car alarms, and the hum of air conditioners. Please do not spoil this serenity. For the sake of our quiet community, wildlife lives around us, please consider building these unneeded homes. Please reconsider building these unneeded homes. There are condos going up unsold just down the road, which will add more traffic to our streets. If we ever need to evacuate this area for whatever reason, be it flood or fire, it may even be to the detriment of the residents of Sail Harbor. Sail Harbor has only one exit via Jasmine. If that exit is blocked by excess, excess traffic, I do fear what may happen. I agree with the concerns friends of the Anclot River and citizens of Tarpon Springs have raised about the dangerous traffic issues. Please consider abandoning this project that will disrupt the homes of precious wildlife and may lead to the loss of human life via traffic accidents. Next email, Renee Torres, 400 Grand Boulevard. I came to Tarpon Springs because of the beauty exemplified by the Greek fishing village on the Anclot River and an abundance of wonderful historic houses located on beautiful bayous and surrounding wetlands. Living here ten years, we need to focus on natural assets and keep redeveloping areas that are rundown or less desirable rather than adding projects and destroying finite and open wilderness, something that cannot be replaced. We keep approving projects to increase the tax base, and though there were no services to be provided, the town would just pick up extra revenue. That is a longtime fallacy facing communities throughout the county. It is time to learn the value and uniqueness of what we have and to stop trying to make ourselves look like every other town in the country. Does anyone realize that we won the Best Little Town Award for something other than development? I urge you to stop the insane need for development and redevelop errors, areas that need to, that focus to make ourselves even more special rather than take up our pristine land, which we restore, destroy that which makes us unique and just make a few tax dollars while making some rich. Next email. Roger Bullock. I come to Tarpon Springs often because I like the setting of the natural habitats of the wetlands and of Tarpon. I am a farmer from Indiana, and I know the value of preserving those wetlands. This is what attracted me to Tarpon Springs the first time I drove in, so I hope you will consider not destroying what you have in Tarpon Springs. Next email, Joseph Weinzele, 6381 Poly Five. Dear Mayor Alhousen, members of the City Commission, I urge your BLC to, number one, deny the rezoning request for the vacant land parcel for which Anclot Harbor is proposed. Two, rezone the parcel as conservation area and preserve it for the benefit of the environment and for future generations. And three, provide city residents with a twenty-acre plus preserve voted on and paid two hundred forty-eight thousand in public funds in 1979 as part of the Reagan property perin city landfill. This commitment by the, to provide twenty acres natural preserve, which voters approved on December 11, 1979, was never fulfilled. Thank you for your attention to this very important matter.
Next email. As a Tarpon Springs resident, I hold heartily oppose the approval of this project. Please vote to conserve the area and not give us more congestion, traffic headaches, etc. Christina D'Amiano, 3950 US Highway 19 North. Next email. I am a concerned citizen resident of Tarpon Springs. I preface this request by communicating what I witnessed during and after completion of the housing project known as Ikaria on Pinellas. I have been using the bike path Pinellas Trail located directly behind the Complantex 2007. During the project's construction up until its completion, I witnessed a slow, methodical, systematic death of entire ecosystem where Ikaria on Pinellas currently rests. I watched as thousands of truckloads of filter were unloaded, dozed against a cofferdam built on what once was an active ecosystem, which supported spawning areas for fish and wildlife. Ponds and swamp lands on both sides of Pinellas Trail, each subject to title, influence are now reduced to narrow drainage ditches. With the exception of occasional bird-seeking food, the area is devoid of wildlife. Additionally, Pinellas Avenue in front of Ikaria on Pinellas has become a nightmare. As the Ikaria on Pinellas increases, the traffic will only worsen. In order to leave the development, if one wishes to go southbound on Pinellas Avenue, the choice is either to make a left turn onto Pinellas Avenue from Development Main Entrance where there is no traffic signal, or drive through Winn-Dixie Parking Lot through to Mears. Winn-Dixie Parking Lot has become a major thoroughfare since the development was completed. Someone had the foresight to install a series of speed in from of Winn-Dixie and adjacent businesses regarding the development of four-hundred-plus unit apartments on Anclot River. Will the following be available to general public or only be made available through a Florida FOIA request? The traffic control plan, the plan itself, who authorized the plan? Agencies who approved the traffic control plan proposed by the developers? The environmental impact plan, the plan itself, who authored the plan? Agencies who approved the environmental impact plan of the developers? In summary, I am opposed to development of the subject parcel to such time as both one and two above have been reviewed by those opposed to this development. Those opposed have been afforded an appropriate length of time, opportunity to perform such a review, including but not limited to their attorneys and/or consultants. The opinion of those opposed has been entered into public record. George Cleco, Tarpon Springs. Next email. Thank you for contacting me. I am a longtime resident over sixteen years in Tarpon Springs. It is unfortunate to see what has taken place in a few short years with the degrade, degrade, degradation of Tarpon Springs. It is difficult to travel anywhere in the area. It is a mass hysteria. Please stop this development, do not approve it. The influx of people to this area cannot be further managed. It is apparent that the people today do not care about anything except getting somewhere first. US-19 is a death zone and will become even worse with the type of development adding travelers to travel, time, and not to mention pollution and more. Tarpon Springs is still a beautiful place to live. I live in my home at the end of Riverside Drive on the coast of the Gulf, and it takes me twenty to thirty minutes to drive four miles to US-19. I am a skilled driver without any disabilities. Thank you for your consideration, allowing me to seek Randy Starman, Tarpon Springs. Next email. To whom it may concern, I am writing to protest the proposed development of a four-hundred apartment complex in Tarpon Springs and along the Anclot River. I strongly believe that the entire committee, even the county and the state of Florida, would benefit far more by this becoming a public park to put the land for the diversity of wildlife and birds, gopher tortoises, bald eagles, and many more species, and to help protect the surrounding areas. Preserving this land as designating it as a park would do, will also prevent future problems with flooding, will prevent the intended deforestation against a threat to wildlife and birds, and will prevent significant pollution to the river and groundwater that the parking lots could cause. In addition, the city could gain revenue from use of the land, some carefully planned limited parking, snack shacks, or food truck allowance, boat and kayak rentals, etc. Making this a public park would benefit far more people. As a resident of Tarpon Springs and a small business owner here, I sincerely hope that not vote, allow this housing development. Peggy McCartel, PhD, M.A.
Next email. Commissioners, my name is Peter Grace, and I live at 95 Rachel Drive, Tarpon Springs. I am opposed to the city allowing the sale of the Walmart property on the Anclot River if it is going to be developed into an apartment complex. I would be in favor of the property being purchased by the city if it will be developed into a public park and boating facilities. Please vote no on allowing the property to be purchased for anything other than public facilities. Thank you. Next email. Nicole Fleming, 1804 Longview Lane. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to formally state my strong opposition to developing the land along the Anclot River and US-19 into more apartments. In the twenty-two years I've lived in Tarpon Springs, the traffic has gotten horrendous along 19 and Alt-19, and Tarpon is quickly losing, is quickly losing its small-town charm and feel. Our infrastructure cannot support four-hundred new apartments in this area. I am strongly in favor of preserving this land as a park or nature preserve, and hope you will consider the environmental damage that more development would cause. Please vote no to the apartment complex and yes on green space. Next email. Stacy Kaiser. I'm opposed to building on US-19. Can we just leave some nature, please? This town is overbuilt. Next email. Sandra Sabelas. Dear City Commissioners, this email is my objection to the Houston-based Morgan Group for building a five-building four-hundred-four luxury apartment complex. Focus should be placed on protect the rural landscape, help open space and animal shooters, protect air and water quality, provides places for recreation, and create tourist attractions that bring investments into the local economy. Police policies that support walking, biking, and public transit help reduce our air pollution from vehicles while saving people money. Instead, the shitty-
Instead, the city should purchase the property and turn and turn it into some type of recreational area. Be it R V parking and camping that charges an entrance fee with a biking trail, fishing pier, bird watching, and maybe allow space for a couple of healthy food trucks that pay leasing space. This would be a way to entice tourists and bringing additional revenue to the city while supporting our small businesses. Next email. Cleo Beck. To whom it may concern. I'm, it is my objection to the proposed project of building four hundred plus condominiums in the wetland area currently owned by Walmart. As a Tarpin Springs resident and property owner, I hereby voice my objection to the proposed condominium project contemplated for the twenty-two acre plot along the Ankle River that is currently owned by Walmart. Tarpin Springs does not need four hundred plus condominiums built on a parcel of land that should be conserved as wetlands. Tarpin Springs does not have the infrastructure for such a development. Also, in my opinion, down in areas adjacent to downtown are already overdeveloped. Tarpin Springs Mayor and Board of Commissioners should not be promoting projects that will pollute the Ankle River, snarl our our streets with substantially more traffic and significantly changed character of our town. Tarpin Springs Mayor and Board of Commissioners should instead be looking into acquiring this property from the and protecting, protecting it as much needed wetlands and green space. Please reject the proposed sale and development and instead prepare a plan of acquisition for land by the city on behalf of the residents we elected you.
Next email. Please support the maintenance of the park and open space rather than the development of four hundred units along the Ankle River. Development would result in many negative effects, including flooding, loss of habitat for wildlife, destruction of wetlands, deforestation, and the proposed development is being with the character of Tarpin Springs. Thank you, Ellen Barr. Next email. We do not want apartments in the old Walmart site. Too much density in our beautiful Tarpin. Save the eagle's nest. Build church, six twelve Bay Shore Drive. Next email. The original Walmart site plan had a proposed open space preservation site located south of the entry road. I recall seeing a map that identified this location as an archaeological Indian site. One of the proposed buildings is shown at this location. Two, the Walmart plan provided for the Ankle River overflow path for floodwater resolve many of the utility concerns discussed. Three, improvements to Haynes Road to comply with the second act requirement might require minor wetland impact that could be resolved by primitive wetland mitigation. Four, the massive retention pond will lower the seasonal water table and severely impact existing and proposed vegetation. Five, the drone video showing traffic flow is not conclusive. Traffic planning must be included. Projected must include projected future traffic flow. This was from Richard Hague, Tarpit Springs, seven four eight Charlotte Avenue. Next email. Please enter my email to the record as a citizen who opposes the development of twenty-two acres of wetlands and eagle habitat on the Ankle River. We should not sacrifice to development the valuable habitat this area provides. Trees and other plant life positively affect the quality of air we breathe and the water we drink. It is unconscionable to destroy this land for more buildings in an already crowded county. Sincerely, Roxanne Smith. Next email. I object to the development of the property for the following reasons. The development process itself will cause irreparable damage to the wetlands and wildlife of the area. Once developed, there will be a constant temptation to add new access routes and creeping extensions and intersection. The design itself shows there will be unchecked pollution caused by parking lot runoff into the Ankle River. No one knows what damage this unending pollution will cause. More than a thousand trees that we can ill afford to lose will be removed and never bald eagles that will be disturbed, gopher tortoises their wildlife will be killed by the development. I urge the commissioners to find preserve the area as low-impact public space. I urge the commissioners to encourage the development away from the fragile wetlands. Thank you for consideration. Graham Jones, twenty fifty-six North Point Alexis Drive, Tarpin Springs. Next email. Commissioners, I would like to address my concerns regarding the apartments that may be built on the wetlands. I live in a small fifty-five plus community, Tarpin Glen, and need to address my concern. One, the wetlands should be not be touched at all. Their value is important to the people, animals and the Ankle River. To quote, wetlands are a critical part of our natural environment. They protect our shores from wave action, reduce impact of floods, absorb pollutants and improve water quality. They provide habitat for animals and plants and may contain a wide diversity of life. Supporting plants and animals that are found nowhere else. I may also say it is important to stop climate change. I am sure most of you are aware and should be against this. Two, the proposed area is hazardous to the people who live in Tarpin Springs and surrounding areas bring more traffic to Highway nineteen and Jasmine Road is only a two-lane road. Have any of you watched how people drive, especially Jasmine Road? How are people going to get out of their driveways? People who live here have mentioned how they almost accidents to leave or enter just our small area. As a matter of fact, quite a few people drive in the middle of the road because of the twists and turns which I have seen. With the pandemic going on, I started to walk the dog down the road. After a few times, decided not to walk my dog along the road because we could get killed. As for Highway nineteen, no one drives at fifty-five. To try and get over the three lanes is a feat. I use the turnaround to take my dog to the park. Many times I see people driving even faster to not let me turn. Coming back trying to cross at the light on to Spruce is a challenge. Is this thing going to put up a light to let people turn? I might add, it is always interesting to watch the biker speeding along nineteen without a light, how many accidents will happen? Are you going to protect the people? I feel very strongly that you are putting people's lives in danger. Number three, there is not enough information on this. I have never received notification of this. Our surrounding neighbors from Clearwater to Port Ritchie, have they been informed of all the traffic which will be created on nineteen? January first, I was driving from the mall back to Tarpin. There was an accident and traffic was not moving. Do you have enough hospitals such as Trinity Hospital nearby for a severe pileup? This year, if we had a hurricane, Tarpin Springs told us to go to Palm Harbor for safety. Does Tarpin Springs have enough room, a safe place for people to in a hurricane after four hundred apartments to go to drain a flood or hurricane? Four, I feel first of the wetlands and how important they are to our survival along the progressing too fast with this proposal. There should be more consideration or do I, it will help Tarpin Springs people who have to travel on Highway nineteen or Jasmine Road. Five, I am very strongly against this. I am also very sad that I had to write this after yesterday, but I have to voice my opinion. Just as second thought, I recently went to add that health and the apartments there are a complete eyesore. Thank you for your time, Margaret Fulton. Next email. Hello Commissioners, I would like to register with my request that you deny progressing this development. My reasons are as follow. River location, wildlife refuge and environmental impact are severely negative in many ways already well documented. Traffic impact on U S nineteen regardless of ultimate entry, exit plan will be severe given the existing number of vehicles stationed by the bridge and incremental vehicles presented by high-density housing. All of us have sat in our vehicles at U-turn locations anxiously watching and literally feeling north and southbound traffic speed by far in excess of posted speed limits, knowing that any one of these moving vehicles represent a deadly accident. The complexity added by entry, exit of this development is incredible. Alternative ingress decrees onto Jasmine Road also will overwhelm the existing or any presumed improvement to Jasmine and Spruce. Both roads are overloaded at shortcut from westbound Keystone to northbound U S nineteen. Jasmine is effectively the road and all the entrances sell harbor set to spruce. Speed of traffic on both roads is already alarmingly high. North into Jasmine is curvy, two lane, no shoulder and compels, it seems even, local residents to speed. Spruce and south end of Jasmine seem to compel drivers to speed, take advantage of the shortcut and they already heavy traffic, long commute experienced by all drivers through north Pinellas South pass go. Our world is changing for the long term. Lot of existing building structures vacant in this part of the county that can be redeveloped into housing should be more housing really be necessary. This will only get worse under the new normal. Our civil planners and developers need to consider alternate development of such space. The Walmart property has been and continues to be an excellent location for park space that can be enjoyed by all residents. Such space is already important under the old normal. Under the new culture, work opens space with broad access and minimum peak traffic times will be even more important. Funding support already available and will only get greater under these norms as Fed, U S, state, county and city governments begin to recognize the importance of such properties. Thank you for denying this application. Thank you for leading us. William Myers, thirteen eighty-nine Cell Harbor Circle. Next email. We implore our Board of Commissioners to vote against the development and destruction of this property along the jewel of our city River. It is time to think of our children and turn this property into public use land for the future of the unique and special community. It is time to protect the limited wildlife that also calls Tarpin Springs home. We live in the area that has lost valuable wetlands and small wildlife corridors all around us. In the four-plus years we have made Tarpin our home, the damage is visible. Please vote no for Ankle Harbor. Vote yes for quality of life for the citizens and wildlife of Tarpin Springs. Thank you, Sharon and Tony Landrum, forty-five West Martin Luther King Junior Drive. Next email. I have been a lifelong resident of Tarpin Springs and have seen the city transform through development for better, in my opinion. However, not all development is equal and careful consideration should be always given to any development projects. I was only eighteen during the Walmart development issue and was not present for had left the city to serve the Marine Corps. Upon my return home, the issue was over. In the last ten years, it is said that several sets of the city and county leaders have failed to protect one of the last tracks of land in Pinellas County. I do not think the question tonight should be, can this land be developed, but rather, should it be developed? Seventy-four acres that feature twenty-one acres of wetlands and thriving ecosystem is going to be changed or revocably, no matter how cautious or well-planned this apartment complex is. At the end of the day, it is an apartment complex and people living there will over time degrade the environment. There is no way the end result is not negative. If care of the environment is not valid to this council, I would question the development from a safety standpoint. The current proposal is for one entry to U S nineteen. This is a disaster waiting to happen as vehicles trying to cross nineteen could lead to a bad accident causing backups on the highway and preventing people from getting in or out of the apartments, including emergency services. Also, the potential for flooding during a storm as the area is zoned A for evacuation must be considered. It is really good planning to pack an apartment complex in a flood-prone area next to a river when sea highs and flood risks are only getting worse. These are but two of the multitude of reasons why this property should not be developed. I would ask this council to keep one of the last pieces of unsold green space in the county safe and work with the county to protect it long term. The city of Tarpin Springs is a beautiful place and the property is an asset that should not be thrown away for some quick financial gain. We have to think long-term here as a city. Apartments are only going to degrade and lose value over time until they are an ice drain on city resources. I think the people of Tarpin will make their voices heard clear on this issue as time goes on. Keep Tarpin Springs beautiful and don't spoil a wonderful piece of land with another apartment complex on U S nineteen. Tarpin is different from the rest of Pinellas County. Let the city keep its unique beauty. Thank you for your time. Mike Rolleston, fourteen oh seven Burke Street. Next email. Hello. Good evening. My name is Mary Samarcus and I live at three hundred South Florida Avenue. I am commending tonight at the meeting to let you know commenting, I'm sorry, I am commenting tonight at the meeting to let you know that I am vehemently impose the proposed Ankle Harbor development. It is regrettable that the public was only widely made aware of the proposed development recently, despite cities extensive interaction with the developers. I wish that simply impressing upon you all of the sense of wrongness about this development would be enough. But the legality of this development doesn't resolve our feelings. And bees and moss, birds and turtles don't speak a language humans understand, unfortunately. They have no ability to come here and advocate for their right to live undisturbed in Tarpin Springs, though they have as much right as any humans have. Instead, I strongly urge you to look closely at the fine details of proposed development before you. Is this going to benefit all of us in the long run or will there be a profit made by outsiders in return for detriment for by generations of Tarponites to come? What lives will be lost due to reckless drivers who will attempt to take shortcuts on the southbound route on U S nineteen without a traffic light at this development. What will this development add to the community in ten years, twenty years, fifty years? If the cheap, quick construction of this day and age actually makes it that long? What impact will this development having decreasing wetlands and increasing flooding Tarpin Springs? Unfortunately, this is one more example of the failure of Tarpin Springs government to protect the land we are blessed to have. The city has called itself the Venice of the South, but over but has over many decades allowed the natural waterways and wetlands of Tarpin Springs to be destroyed piece by piece in the name of development. This project has the potential to be yet another blight on the reputation of the Tarpin Springs city governance. Given the continuous history of the parcel of land, it is shameful that you all as commissioners and particularly the city manager have let it come to this. After Walmart was no longer going to be built on this land, the city had the opportunity to budget and or raise funds to purchase this land. This could have been a great asset in terms of a park, boating or recreation area and gone a long way in preserving the natural wetlands in Tarpin Springs. Instead, countless commissioners have come and gone in the past decade and the one constant, our city manager has done nothing. The proposed development is only one more heartbreaking example of what has been thinking the city for years, a lack of direction. It is not enough to merely exist or maintain the status quo. You work for the people and are hearing our voices loud. I hope it is not too late for you to start listening to us. Thank you for your consideration of my comments. Samarcus. Next email. To our city commissioners, my family lives in Cell Harbor where the proposed Haynes road would connect to Jasmine. As someone who drives Jasmine every day, I can reliably tell you that the road cannot sustain additional traffic. It is narrow, barely two lanes around the curves, has lots of wildlife along the edges and is used by walkers and bikers on a national road as there are no shoulder or sidewalks. Adding potential hundreds of cars would lead to all kinds of conflict, trouble and injury. We would also like to see the seventy-three preserved for the beautiful wildlife that call it home. I appreciate your time and consideration. Cynthia Nelson, fifteen forty-four Mary Lane. Next. Dear city of Tarpin Springs, I recommend that you deny the permit to build an apartment complex on the proposed Ankle site for the following reasons. The proposed project sits in evacuation zone A and such will burden evacuation traffic on local, regional and Florida evacuation route for any story of hurricane. The applicant proposes four oh four residential units regarding parking. It states that seven hundred and sixty-one spaces will be built. The documents state that enough evacuation shelters are available for residents. Florida's hurricane evacuation behavioral study shows that only thirteen percent of evacuees will go in shelters for a category five storm. It also shows that for category five storm, only twelve percent will stay in their own neighborhood. Thirty-four percent will go outside their county but stay in Florida and twenty-eight percent will leave Florida. That means that evacuees from this development would contribute to clog the roads not only in the local area but also in places further away within Pinellas County and neighboring counties and on interstate highway system. It states in exhibit A that the typical household plan to take two vehicles during an evacuation. Thus, it can be expected that twice as many cars will clog evacuation routes as there are residential units. For more hurricane evacuation behavioral information from Pinellas County and the Tampa Bay area C vine two. With climate change causing increased sea level rise and stronger hurricanes, it's just a matter of time before the major hurricanes directly hits the area causing increased devastation. before the major hurricanes directly hits the area causing increased devastation. All the expectations. I'm sorry, all the exceptions to codes and zoning that the applicant wants to add to the problems of hurricane evacuation. The cumulative effects of this development added to past zoning and code expectations might be creating a real hazard. I urge you to consider the cumulative effects of all the development in Tarpon Springs on hurricane evacuation and low-flying vulnerable city. I urge the city to do more to prevent climate change in the first place. As you probably know, carbon dioxide stays in the atmosphere for decades, so a certain amount of unavoidable climate change is already built in to pass carbon dioxide emissions. However, ongoing increasing emissions will rapidly increase the effects. This important issue. Sincerely, Richard Somerville, one six two zero five Larson Lane. Next email. Regarding development of Inklot Harbor, efforts to improve Tarpon Springs with additional living quarters are appreciated. However, approximately fifty percent of the wetlands have been developed in Florida, and it's recommended by experts that remaining wetlands be preserved for environmental sustainability. At least thirty percent of the land be protected. There's currently an international movement for environmental sustainability via the UN Global Compact with goals for twenty thirty and a Florida West Coast Climate Alliance to help mitigate resilience and change. Possibly Walmart government representatives and real estate developers can answer the call and rise to the occasion to identify sensitive parcels that needs to be preserved in Tarpon Springs in order to protect the environment for future generations for the children and grandchildren. There's a concern regarding three feet rise of water levels by twenty fifty-five, and Tarpon Springs is the most at-risk community in Pinellas County. Tampa Bay area is the second most vulnerable in the nation behind Miami. It concerns me that city planning would not want to protect the land and that, well, resource corporations and developers would not feel obligated to protect wetlands considering our ecosystem is threatened now. I do understand there's consideration to protect the wetland upland in the plan and the desire to receive income from but wouldn't apartments be better suited to build in a location away from a major traffic highway and a quieter area and on land that isn't a sensitive wetland prone to flooding? There is an issue with the second entrance impacting wetland. There's a land available in the city that needs to be redeveloped as an option. Has a plan to purchase property, and this one is on the list of approximately fifteen through eighteen. Can the property be developed into something that will be non-invasive? A park has been mentioned. There has been communication with the city that grants were available in the past. Are there plans to ensure current real estate holdings in Tarpon Springs will remain environmentally sustainable into the future? Shouldn't city planning and all levels of government work to protect wetland areas, increase greenery, protect wildlife in the sensitive historical time when a call to the international action is required to protect the ecosystem? Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns. Sophie Protopapis, six fifteen Vayner Drive, Tarpon Springs. Next. To whom it may concern, this is a protest of the proposed building of Hayes Road through to Jasmine Avenue with the new Inklot Harbor complex. I and my wife have owned property in the North Lake subdivision for twenty-one years. Our property backs up to Jasmine Avenue. We are opposed to the proposed construction of Hayes Road extension to Jasmine Avenue as as use of the Walmart property for four hundred and four apartments. We are opposed for many reasons. One, Jasmine has not been designed for that type of usage that is proposed. Estimated twenty-three hundred plus vehicles a day that could just from new come from a new apartment complex. We also have Cell Harbor, North Lake, single families, trailer park, and duplexes on the Jasmine, as well as Lindiakas Townhome Project. This was somewhat of a rural road for many years. Although we live in a development that required another access road when proposed, the road Melon Street did not adversely affect anyone since there was no other residential structures in the area of Melon. Two, traffic patterns since the Spruce Street extension went through and already adversely affecting our area with an abundance of cut-through traffic to and from US nineteen, which is a negative factor. Three, the sports complex to the south gets an overflow of vehicles when sporting events are going on on that line, both sides of Jasmine Avenue at Complex. Past cemetery, which itself causes traffic and pedestrian issues, and there are no sidewalks on Jasmine at that area. Four, Jasmine is in deplorable condition at South and before Tarpe Avenue, as well as the South Curve at the North. Five, Jasmine is already receiving additional truck semi traffic from the Spruce Street extension, which should have been one way west to US nineteen, if anything. A block for decorative wall fence of the corner of Spruce and Jasmine at Lindiakas Townhome has already been knocked down twice by semi truck trailer that is too large to maneuver the corner, but Lindiakas was not required to install angle walls as Pioneer was at North Lake entrance for sightline. This will only get worse when buildings are up and totally block sightline at the area. Six, Jasmine Avenue is slowly becoming another alternate nineteen with Spruce Street extension and Hayes Road proposed would only make things worse for sure. Seven, sees the city is the one calling for the Hayes Road construction, not the developer. This is not for the betterment of our area. If common sense prevails, one would realize that anyone living in the new apartment complex proposed that wants to head south on US nineteen in the morning rush hour would take an easy route out to Jasmine rather than the north route on US nineteen to make a U-turn to go south. This does not traffic, take a traffic study to determine this, just a few times maneuvering nineteen. Seems a no-brainer. Cut-through traffic also comes from Keystone Tarpon Avenue to westbound Melon to Jasmine to nineteen. There's also concerns about the corner of Melon and Jasmine as this property may also be proposed in the future for development further, adding to the traffic on Jasmine. There is also the issue of noise from the added traffic on Jasmine. We have already gone from one-time serene to listening to day in and day out traffic as well. Ten, also of note is the wetlands and that would have been disturbed for Hayes Road to go through. Eleven, this parcel was thought to have been proposed for a park like setting once Walmart declined to build. That is the avenue that should be pursued since there is little property of that size and water access available to the county, which I believe most densely populated per square mile in Florida, and this apartment complex adds to that density. Twelve, what also will this do as far as impact on infrastructure, water, sewer, police, fire, etc.? There are no left turn lane from Jasmine South to Tarpon Avenue East at light, although there is one on northbound side at Tarpon. This also adds to problems. We are urging the board to reconsider their prior vote in favor of this, to vote against this and taking exiting residents into consideration, existing residents into consideration. Thank you, Dan and Karen Ross. Next email. Thank you for taking the time to read my comments. My name is Teresa Baderak, and I live at seventeen oh one Mexico Avenue in Tarpon Springs. My comments are in reference to the proposed Inklot Harbor project. I object to the project for a number of reasons. Destruction and degradation of wetlands and disturbance of bald eagles' nests, the destruction of gopher tortoises and other wildlife habitat, removal of thousands of trees and other plants, and the pollution caused by parking lot runoff into the Inklot River. During a time of climate instability, we must protect our flood plain and remaining undeveloped spaces if we truly hope to be a resilient community. This project appears to be to provide no benefits to the citizens of Tarpon Springs while only degrading the environment and increasing our flood risk. Thank you, Teresa Boderak. Dear Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I'd like to express my concerns regarding the Inklot Harbor Apartments project for the following reasons. One, safety. I already tried using US nineteen because of the volume of traffic, the speeders, and the dangerous U-turns. The additional traffic in and out of this apartment complex, as well as a large amount of U-turns, only increase the chance for more accidents. Two, as someone who enjoys using the Pinellas Bike Trail, if the rear entrance exit is approved for the project, it would create heavy traffic on Jasmine Avenue, which will create problems for bikers on the trail. Three, this property is beautiful and should be considered to be used for hiking, biking, kayaking, and other nature pursuits. We will never have this opportunity again to provide the citizen of Tarpon Springs with another beautiful green space as it relates to this location. Thank you for considering my concerns. I ask that you reject the applicant's proposal. Sincerely, Tom Wheeler, fifteen sixty-three River Court, Tarpon Springs. Next email. To whom it may concern, as a nature lover, it is incredibly disheartening to hear the plans transform the seventy-three acres Tarpon Springs nature to a residential zone. Doing so would not only cost the town of a lush area to connect with nature, but risk the homes animal species. One such animal is the gopher tortoise, whose burrowed tunnels underground provide homes and shelter to over three hundred and fifty animal species. Not only would causing these animals to leave their natural land likely cause the deaths of many of the runs a risk for the public as well. Constructing residential buildings over this land would cause many of these animals to have to relocate. And with much of the area in Tarpon Springs already being used commercially or residentially, there's not many upright places to go. This could cause us to have these relocated animals moving into our current properties, risking not only animals' lives but potentially causing harm for the citizens of Tarpon Springs. I strongly urge Walmart to consider selling the land to Pinellas County so that Tarpon Springs may use the land to continue to preserve a less natural, beautiful part of our community. Please don't allow our homes and these animals' homes to become yet another massive human building, another road funneling traffic onto our crowded highways, and another reason so many animals continue to become endangered. Sincerely, Deanna Lookingville. Next email. I have lived in Tarpon Springs since nineteen ninety-nine and since then have watched traffic get worse and worse. I live in Riverwatch and only have one way in and one way out onto US nineteen. We have no light to assist us as we have to navigate onto US nineteen solely. And when traffic is backed up into Pasco, as it is every day, we have to get across three lanes and stop frustrated drivers who do not want to let you across because they don't want you to cut in front of them after they have been waiting in that traffic for a long time and have more weight in Pasco. The lights in Pasco back up the traffic every day because they're they are short-cycled and cannot handle the traffic. My children have had to learn quickly how to get onto US nineteen as they have become old enough to drive. It is a very dangerous part of the road, as all of us, US nineteen, is dangerous for most part. Adding an apartment complex into the mix is just asking for more problems. We need not to have more traffic issues on top, not needing more people to be in an area that's perfect for a park. Grounds need to be for a park. We need that area to stay unpolluted and allow the river to stay clean and beautiful. Apartments will only cause pollution and trash into our little community. If Walmart couldn't be better, then apartments should be either. Both will do extreme damage to the environment. Please reconsider this. We don't need more apartments in the area. They just finished putting some up just north across the street. No more. We need to save our ecosystem. Thank you, Lisa and Darren Watson, Riverwatch subdivision, nineteen ninety-seven Inklot Vista, Tarpon Springs. Next email. My husband and I both are greatly disappointed and distressed by the proposal of four hundred-plus units apartment complex to be slated and built on US nineteen in Inklot River. We have been residents here for nearly eight years and love Tarpon Springs. However, given that that we live in the neighbor right neighborhood right off the Highway nineteen, we absolutely cannot fathom the idea of adding more traffic to what is considered such a dangerous and busy road. The following are reasons that we as a community are so against the proposal. One, we object to the increase in traffic. FDT estimates generating four thousand additional car trips. We object to the flooding caused and the proposed destruction degradation of wetlands. We oppose to the proposed disturbance of the two bald eagles' nests. We object to the requested advance height restriction on these buildings. High-rise apartment buildings not fit Tarpon Springs' German character. We object to the deforestation of over a thousand trees to make room for parking lots. We object to the destruction of thirty-plus gopher tortoises, gopher tortoises that live on site. We object to the pollution caused by parking lot runoff into the Inklot River. As a community, we propose the land be preserved as a park, as originally promised by the commission and mayor. This city can earn revenue from the parking boat kayak rentals and snapshot. Please note that this is extremely important to us. As someone who believes strongly in voting for those that share our values, my husband, myself, our community as a whole will certainly remember those that voted for this project. While I realize that Tarpon Springs would not like to bring in additional would like to bring in additional income and revenue, it should not be done at the expense of residents' wishes. It should also not be done because the city commissioner has a mother or stepmother on the board of the company planning to develop the land. Truly, I truly hope that you will take our thoughts into account before allowing something like this to come to our beloved city. Thank you for your time. Joanne Gardner. Next email. Dear Board of Commissioners, our community of Cell Harbor is quite quiet, one surrounded by joys of nature. We are concerned with for the deer in our area, which we've seen grow from fawns to adulthood and then bring up a family of their own. We also have the pleasure of seeing tortoises, rabbits, roseate spoonbills, sandhill cranes, and even a family of bald eagles. All of these precious animals live in the wetlands surrounding the community, and it would be disheartening to see their homes destroyed. We love this area because of the quietness and the ability to see all kinds of creatures come and go. The part of Jasmine Avenue is just past the bike trail where the road winds around and into Cell Harbor. You can see alligators in the retention pond and all kinds of different birds. It's a peaceful drive. This serenity is also found as you kayak or boat along the Inklot River. Where you once saw old trees covered with moss and eagles soaring, we will see tall buildings and parking lots. Where you once heard the sounds of birds singing, dolphins jumping, and gentle waves breaking up upon the shore, you'll hear more traffic sound, car alarms, and the hum of air conditioners. Please don't spoil this serenity. For the sake of our quiet community and the wildlife that lives around us, please reconsider building these unneeded homes. There are condos sold just down the road, which will traffic to our streets should the condos ever be occupied. If we ever need an evacuate to evacuate this area, for whatever reason, be it flood or fire, it may even be to the detriment of the residents of Cell Harbor. Cell Harbor has only one exit via Jasmine Avenue, and if that exit is to be clogged by excess traffic, I do fear what may happen. I agree with the concerns friends of the Inklot and concerns citizens of Tarpon Springs have raised about the dangerous traffic issue. Please consider ending this project that will disrupt the homes of the precious wildlife and may lead to the loss of human life via traffic accidents. Thank you, Judy and Andy Heath. Next email. Good day to all present. I want to have my objection to the one of the Walmart property placed in the official minutes. I've become a full-time resident of Tarpon Springs a little over two years ago. When my wife and I retired, we had resolutely decided to move to Florida full-time. One too many New England winters had taken their toll off to Florida, but where seem to be our liking, but there were was a huge piece of coast to consider. After much searching, real estate agents suggested we look at property in Tarpon Springs. The property was everything we dreamed of. It checked all the boxes. Now for the big sell, how was the community? We spent days walking, riding, checking out everything for us to see. We queried those folks we met with a tell us about Tarpon Springs. Everything we heard was a positive, the decision made, and we are now Tarpon Springs, or is it Spongers? A large part of the charm of Tarpon Springs is it being a nature community or mature community with an illustration history in the part of Florida. The values, the parks, beaches, cultural amenities, all add to the rich flavor that is Tarpon Springs. Not to be confused with the NIMBY, I see nothing wrong with development, broadening the tax base, etc. However, the urge to build and expand comes at a cost. The risk taken in letting the project move forward is to the detriment of the coastal old Florida charm that convinced me to settle here. I understand Walmart's position in dumping this parcel as they were denied development rights several years back. I don't think I'm alone in saying the city and county should acquire this parcel as green space or potential park. Another housing project is just that, another housing project. One thing is certain, once the parcels develop, it is gone forever, never to return. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Steve Thomas, sixteen thirty-eight Kissimmee Court. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Steve Thomas, 1638 Kissimmee Court, Turpin Springs. Next email. Dear BOC and Mayor of Turpin Springs, my name is Joel Dykes, and along with my wife, we live on Jasmine Avenue in South Harbor. We moved here about 10 years ago, and I'm retired from a 26-year career as a Navy pilot. The attractions were numerous, but high on the list was the ability to live a quiet life within South Harbor, yet to be close to the various amenities and locate. I envy the local government officials to remove the serenity from those of us who live on or have access to the Anclot River by continually allowing non-single-family homes throughout the area. We were certainly not happy with the addition of the sef condos on Jasmine Road, which required the extension of Spruce Avenue. That created a traffic hazard at the intersection due to the inability for those approaching Jasmine from Highway 19 to see the traffic on Jasmine Avenue, causing them to have to pull into the southbound lane to see. Additionally, we have a speedy flow of work of traffic now due to people trying to cut through the neighborhood to avoid the traffic at Turpin and Highway 19. The portable sign being used to advise people that Spruce Street is not to be used for commercial traffic has proven to be useless, and there's no law enforcement that I have ever seen. If you were to visit, you would see a steady stream of work traffic turn right right again on, then left to get to Highway 19 and avoid the light. The increase in traffic has been as noticeable as it has been annoying. At present, the problem is exaggerated with additional construction within the condo complex right at the edge of the intersection of Jasmine and Spruce require drivers to edge even further into the southbound lane of Jasmine to see the road. You have already allowed a dangerous situation that can't be corrected. At this point, all it could be is contained by ensuring that there will be no additional southbound traffic joining the traffic coming out of South Harbor. But now we come to understand the city and the BOC considering an increase of traffic for proposed apartment complex consisting of 440 apartments and 750 parking spaces by proposing a new Hayes Road. The interference is the most of the traffic would be taking a daily commute south and to work in Pinellas or Hillsborough County, or else Hayes Road wouldn't be necessary. If that isn't true, then Hayes Road, the additional safety and traffic concerns aren't necessary as the apartment residents can simply exit onto 19, head north, and go to work in Pasco. And if that is the case, shouldn't we maintain the ambiance and serenity of Turpin Springs by foregoing the apartment complex altogether? Finally, I would request that Turpin Springs Mayor and BOC consult County about their school bus routes. The proposed Hayes Road would intersect at Jasmine Road, exactly where the school buses start to pick up and let off children who live in South Harbor. And as you probably are aware, the state of Florida just passed two laws addressing drivers who pass stop school buses. I don't think the law would have been passed if it weren't an existing problem. We don't need that. I look forward to your no vote by the mayor and board of commissioners on this matter. We'll follow the issue closely. Respectfully, Joel and Margie Dykes. Next email. There are so many voices crying out for justice today, voices pleading, "I can't breathe", Black Lives Matter, voices crying out for climate justice and their respect for life. Then there are our animal friends and the trees and our waterways. We have no voice. We are called to be the voice for them. We are called to be good stewards of the planet that we have been blessed with. The 74 acres on Anclot River is home to eagles, deer, gopher tortoises, and other variety of birds and wildlife and native plants. An mixed study that was completed by the city of Turpin Springs in 2016 found that Anclot River contributes over $252 million to the local economy. The commissioners knew the importance of the Anclot River and required money to dredge to the river. 3.5 million was secured for the dredging. However, in March of 2019, the money was redirected to the Panhandle to help them out after Hurricane Michael. So you already know how important the property is, the access to the Anclot River is a watershed. If you review the water quality of the Anclot River on the Pinellas County Water Atlas site, you will find that the water quality is impaired according to FDEP as of December 2020. I canvass neighbors near the site, and almost everyone I've met voiced their concern for the development of this property. I want to remind commissioners that you represent the citizens of Turpin Springs. You do not represent corporations from outside the city of Turpin or the state of Florida. The citizens of Turpin Springs are screaming no to this development. So I ask commissioners, knowing that the Anclot River is the peril, acknowledging that the river needs to be dredged, acknowledging the Anclot contributes to Turpin's economy, do we contribute to Anclot's problem by allowing a large corporation from out of state to develop this crucial piece of land that sets the Anclot River? If you want to help the Anclot River, say no to the requested permits. Continue your efforts for funds to dredge the Anclot and to purchase this land for a nice park for the citizens of Turpin. Do your part in protecting Turpin Waterways. Say no to this that is not needed in our city. Thank you, Margot Leisner. 514 Ashland Avenue, Turpin Springs. Next email. Big, big mistake. Wrong direction for Turpin Springs. Wrong place for a large complex in a flood zone. We don't need a strife in Little Tampa. I vote for this property to be a park and add to the beauty and the ambiance of a lovely little town on a charming river. Make the property accessible to the people of Turpin Springs, not off limits, by building some mega unaffordable ugly structure that belongs in Tampa or St. Pete. Sue Baldwin, Turpin Springs. Next email. Dear Mr. Mayor, members of the Turpin Springs Board of Commissioners, I am the real estate broker representing Walmart on the sale of 74-acre site on Highway 19 to the Morgan Group for the proposed multifamily project that is being reviewed by the city. I understand that there has been some discussion within the community regarding the city acquiring the site for a park or preserve as an alternative to the proposed multifamily project. This scenario was contemplated many years ago, but never got any traction given the complexity of the transaction and lack of funds. I've been involved in marketing this property for over the past five years, and in that time, it has been available to purchase to whomever has had an interest in the site and has been widely marketed on several property platforms, as well as signage on the property. In that time, I have had no substantive conversations with anybody from the city or the community regarding a purchase of the property. The Morgan Group was selected as the purchaser by Walmart from several interested parties because they were the most capable buyer, and they were proposing the development with the least impact, especially when compared to commercial uses contemplated by other developers and what is currently allowed by right for the city zoning ordinances. They have been working on projects for well over years. They've made had many meetings and discussions with the city. They've held community and neighborhood meetings, and this purpose has been open to the public all along. It would be very unfortunate for this project to get derailed now because others who have plenty of other opportunities to acquire this property are now trying to intervene. Respectfully, Daniel Ayers, Senior Vice President, SRS Real Estate Partners. Next email. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I've had several concerns about the proposed project, but want to share one of them with you that directly affects me and my neighborhood. I live by Lake Turpin and have access to US-19 via Keystone Road. When I'm going to town or going to go north on US-19, the left lanes for southbound US-19 are so congested and backed up several traffic signal cycles that those of us trying to access Turpin by going across US-19 struggle to get through the backed-up traffic. I don't know if all the recent development has influenced that already or if that has been assessed at this point. But adding more cars from Jasmine onto Keystone will only exuberate, exacerbate the existing difficulty. I would ask for a comprehensive traffic study as those who will be affected long-term are the not the developers, but rather the residents of Turpin Springs. Best, Robin Sanger, 1630 Loonsome Pine, Turpin Springs. Next email. To the Mayor, Board of Commissioners, City of Turpin Springs, I have no objections to the proposed Anclot Harbor project. I have reviewed the documents provided previously to you for consideration from both the applicant and city staff and find acceptable. However, there are some concerns and suggested changes to the proposed conditions of approval. A for consistency of the language, the use of will should be changed to shall in proposed revision conditions of approval. There also should be the words change in potential condition of approval number 21. B, the proposed boat dock is not well-defined by the applicant, leaving much to later interpretation. While the proposed site plan only indicates possibly eight boat slips as a proposed boat dock, there's no proposed condition of approval restricting the number of slips, the use of such slips to residents only of this development, nor the prohibition of commercial use. The applicant has stated that boat slips are for residents. I don't believe is the intention of the applicant or the board of commissioners to allow a large number of slips along the shore of the Anclot River or to allow use of the slips beyond the residence of this development for personal, not commercial use. Additionally, while only a pedestrian path is shown accessing the proposed boat dock, the proposed site plan legend number seven on the project dimension map also indicates a boat parking and pickup drop-off location. Details as to the meaning of this is unclear as to what entails, but since there is only a pedestrian path accessing this area, vehicular access should be prohibited, and upland storage should be limited to canoes, kayaks, and paddleboard. Whether residents owned or proposed clarifying language is recommended in the proposed revisions, conditions of approval number 15 below. C, it should be understood that vehicular connection to Hayes Road will require some partial redesign of the project to show such connection, which will need to be shown on the development plan. D, the review criteria waivers portion of the staff report does not include the actual review criteria as section 83, print B of the Land Development Code, nor are there staff responses to the waiver criteria, although I am not sure staff address such criteria. Only two waivers are indicated in discuss on pages nine and 10 of the staff report dated December 2nd, 2020. However, the applicant's RPD project narrative dated November 6, 2020 on page four indicates there is also a third waiver for a minor reduction to parking requirements to the clubhouse or pool. It states that such waiver request is discussed in section four, but there is no discussion of section four of the RPD project narrative. In discussion with Pat McNeese, principal planner, indicated that it was determined that the waiver was unnecessary since the total amount of parking spaces provided met code requirements. The applicant's narrative indicates a total of 761 parking spaces are required and provided, 716 at-grade and 45 in garages. However, I only count a total of 750 parking spaces provided, 689 at-grade spaces within the gates, 45 spaces in garage, 16 at-grade spaces at the clubhouse pool. This discrepancy in parking counts, and a waiver to reduce parking apparently needs to be addressed by the board of commissioners. Hopefully, the board can consider include a minor reduction parking waiver in any motion of approval. Provided revision conditions of approval and proposed changes indicated appropriately are based on the staff reported in item number three, Mayor Board of Commissioners, former Navy Vincent Planning Director dated December 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. Details of the proposed method of the wetland enhancement and preliminary coordination with the south of the Florida Water Management District showing approval of the jurisdiction determination shall be submitted with the final development plan. Final permits to Swiftman may be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit for site work. Two, a conceptual plan detailing the approach of eradication and future management of Brazilian pepper trees. For each habitat area of the site shall be submitted with the final development plan. The final plan shall be submitted at the time of application for building permit for site work in conjunction with the arborist's report for the protection mitigation plan. The city recognizes that it may be appropriate in some areas of the site to address the tree protection requirements of section 133.04D of the Land Development Code on the area-wide basis for habitats being preserved rather than using crown spread for individual three, a landscape plan with a specific planning scale shall be submitted with the final plan development and shall appropriately sized species for driveway medians within the site. Four, the 50-foot buffer adjacent to the Anclot River shall remain and be managed as undisturbed uplands, hardwood conifer mix, and shall be graded within the 25-foot wetland buffer required by the Southwest Florida Management District. Five, a plan for proposed lighting with shielded lighting and decorative poles shall be with the final development plan. Six, onsite signs and sign poles shall be designed to match the city's terms of specification to downtown community development area. These shall include the development plan. Seven, developers shall be responsible for addressing the provisions of the public pursuant to the article of the Land Development Code as part of the final development plan. A detailed drainage median of requirements of section 141 of the Land Development Code and requirements mud shall be submitted with the final development plan. Nine, detailed plans for utility connections and infrastructure, including wastewater force main construction shall be submitted with the final development plan along with documented coordination from all applicable agencies and landowners affected by the construction. A final development plan submittal that includes onsite infrastructure only be scheduled for review by the technical review committee. The submittal of the plans for onsite public infrastructure shall be required to be submitted and reviewed to scheduling by review of the board of commissioners. Ten, the final traffic study shall be submitted with the final development plan along with Florida's Department of Transportation approval of the proposed roadway and access configuration. Eleven, an updated letter from the Florida Department of State documenting review of the archaeological resources on the site shall be provided with the final development plan. Twelve, an application for future land use map amendment to recreation open space for the upland preserve area shall be submitted prior to or at the time of final development plan submittal. A map adjustment to the preservation only on the city's future land use map shall be required to match the categories of delineated delineated wetlands on site. The city shall process the map adjustment concurrently with the final plan development. Note, I have stated the old condition number 14 regarding dedicating land to the park as it was directed to be deleted. Fourteen, the design of the residential buildings and clubhouse submittal for final plans approvals shall be substantially to the architectural elevations that are part of the preliminary development plan application. However, minor revisions to the architectural feature of these buildings may occur without requiring new preliminary development plan review. Minor revisions to the architectural features include but are not limited to changes to the color palette, the window pattern, siding, and roofing materials and other similar features. Fifteen, the proposed boat dock located adjacent to the Anclot River is subject to all applicable permitting requirements, and upon the issuance of the applicable permits, the timing of the construction of the dock will be determined by the applicant in his sole direction. Use of the proposed boat docks shall be limited to residents in this development only, and commercial use shall be prohibited. The proposed boat dock should be limited to a maximum of 10 boat slips. No vehicular access shall be allowed to the proposed boat dock. There shall be no storage of boats and the pickup or drop-off of the boats except for canoes, kayaks, paddleboards, and other residents of this development. Sixteen, a construction management and mitigation plan is required by the applicable jurisdictional agencies to avoid addressed listed species impacts, including bald eagles, indigo snake, and gopher tortoises, shall be submitted with the application for a building permit for site work. Seventeen, the developers shall be responsible for obtaining applicable permits from all other agencies for meeting the minimum requirements of the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code and for payment of all required fees. Eighteen, the applicant shall complete the process for the final development pursuant to section 82 of the Land Development Code. The final development plan shall be submitted with the one year of approval of the preliminary plan development. Note, for proposed condition number 19 through 24, I have not included the original underlying so as to show any proposed changes, calling will to shall, to be considered with all other above proposed conditions. Nineteen, the applicant shall discuss the FDT and feasibility of signal or arrow at the set opening of Highway 19 and determine if the signal or arrow can be tied to the existing signals at US-19 intersection with Spruce Street and Beckett Way. if this or arrow can be tied to the existing signals at U S nineteen intersection with Spruce Street and Beckett Way. Twenty, the applicant shall commission and evaluation determine the feasibility of utilizing green building stands for the project. Twenty one to the city elect to build Hayes Road, the applicant shall connect the project and use Hayes Road pay rotation estimated at five seventy three, six eighty and shall contribute to the hundred thousand dollars the cities defray the city's cost of construction of Hayes Road east to Jasmine Avenue. The city agrees to notify the applicant in writing of its decision to build or not Hayes Road. Within ninety days, the final element plan approved for the developer shall pursue construction of a two lane rural road section with sidewalks within the existing forty foot right away of Hayes Road subject to obtaining approval from Pinellas County and other applicable jurisdictional agencies. City Tarpon Springs shall be a co applicant on all required permits. The city shall accept financial responsibility for any additional specifically tied to the right of use permit from Pinellas County only above and beyond the normal expected costs associated with construction of a rural two lane road sidewalks and associated drainage improvements. Twenty two, the applicant shall extend the existing reclaimed water line to the project at the applicant's cost, subject to the cease commitment to provide the requisite amount of reclaimed water to save the project. Twenty three, the applicant shall develop the and provide to the city professionally prepared conceptual landscape hardscape design for the city parcel located south of the project entrance on U S nineteen. The professional fees for this design shall not exceed twenty thousand, which fees shall be eligible for impact fee credits. Twenty four, the applicant shall install solar panels to serve the main clubhouse building. Please note that I am a certified professional planner with over thirty five years of experience in both municipal and private capacities and reviewing proposals for compliance with the adopted comprehensive and land development code. And in writing the present proposal to reviewing the approval boards, including drafting appropriate conditions of the approval. I request that changes proposed to the conditions of approval be incorporated into any into any motion of approval of this proposal. Thank you for your consideration. In Wells, A I C P, P thirty two Dixie Highway. Next email. Dear city of Tarpon Springs, my name is Mark Gosson and I live at seven twenty eight Sunset Drive in Tarpon Springs. I have lived in this beautiful city for thirty two of my thirty three years of life. I became obsessed with the beauty that this place and the state as a whole hold your incredible diverse wildlife. I fell in love with fishing at the age of seven while watching ESPN on Sunday morning to watch my fishing idol, the late Joseph Bahabi on the show, The Spanish Fly. He taught me about the importance of sustainable fishery and preserving our environment for generations to come through ethical angling and the importance of proper handling of fish that are caught and released. By the fifteenth, I had become quite the angler and have traveled this unique city to fish all the nooks and crannies that I could possibly access. Now with twenty six years of fishing and exploring under my belt, with the last nine years being at these three times a week. I have come to learn how important equestrian system is to maintain the ecological balance. Our estuaries are the nursery for very fish and wildlife that make Tarpon Springs what it is. The very fish that this city is named after the tarpon depend on those estuaries up the Inklot River to develop from small nearly microscopic fly to the full fledged silver kings. They become that is now one of the most prized and sought after game fish in the world. Most of my time I spent tracking several species. The three at the top of my list for inshore fish have been the Jack Crevel tarpon and my favorite, the state fish, the common snook. Both the snook and jacks require our estuarian system to develop and acts as a sort of hidden for them to grow. It is a trickle down effect. Every species, including dolphins, a dozens of species, a seabirds and our much beloved entities are affected by the destruction of the habitat. These three fish are monks, the apex predators in the water, and they depend on heath healthy estuaries and river to thrive with bait and other organisms that these fish feed on. It's a shame to see the spring value slowly lose its spring water from the various things that prevented it from flowing like it once did when I believed it was called boiling pot spring. I learned from older locals that you can once see the water billow up from the spring. After the disaster of the precious portion of backwater area by the when Dixie off alt nineteen being developed, I have noticed a reduction in the local fish population because that was an important portion of the estuary of the Inklot River. Luckily, while they were draining that portion of the water, a friend of mine, along with several other selfless individuals took it up upon themselves to rescue the tarpon that were becoming trapped in small pools that were left behind from the draining. The point of matter is this, if we do this incredible ecosystem that has already sustained irreversible damage, how can our children and future generations enjoy and witness the same things that we grew to love? Many of my friends now are parents themselves, and if I am blessed enough to have children of my own, I would want them to be able to experience the same awe and excitement of the natural wonder the city has that has captivated the minds and hearts of so many people. Please reconsider developing this land and focus on what would actually make Tarpon Springs flourish, promoting the natural attractions the city has to offer. Mark Gosson. Next email. How can you in good conscience vote for the project on pristine waterway that will have over four hundred units and seven hundred and fifteen parking spaces? Have you ever tried driving highway nineteen north during rush hour in the morning when it takes twenty minutes to go from Lewis Lewis Avenue to Tarpon Avenue? Have you ever tried giving my community River Watch after four P M. When you have to cross three lanes of traffic with cars at a standstill? This property should be as a park with no with so little remaining green space in Pinellas County. I sincerely hope you will vote in favor of Tarpon Springs residents and the environment tonight. Sandra Blaker. Next email. Dear Honorable Tarpon Springs Mayor Commissioners, Dr. Dar Darlene Williams Tarpon Springs since nineteen ninety nine, business owner and nonprofit co founder owner in Tarpon Springs since twenty fifteen, associate a piece for Tarpon since twenty twelve. I'm writing you today to propose therapeutic usage of the beautiful Inklot River property of our Tarpon Springs residents currently owned by Walmart, which is eco therapy using nature to heal traumatized people as well as a queen assisted psychotherapy using groundwork exercises with horses to heal people. Both are becoming popular as ways of healing people suffering from PTSD, anxiety and depression, as well as hosts of other mental health and or interpersonal or leaders leadership issues. See Parade News zinc article. The healing power reports is how equine equine therapy benefits veterans, victims of abuse and more published two fifteen nineteen can provide link if interested. I have seen firsthand the powerful impact of these healing modalities, both in my practice and around the country. In fact, I speak about these technologies at conferences across the nation sans COVID. The duty duty has recognized the effectiveness, especially with our military veterans and my nonprofit has incorporated this modality into treatment plans with our military clientele since twenty thousand twenty oh nine. As a result of me and Red Army Major Tyler Bradley Circle veterans met with former Congressman David Jolly covered in the same beat times and equine modality later mentioned by Jolly on C S of C as well as current Congressman Gus Billarak several times. And we attended many of his monthly veterans as committee means to increase awareness of the local availability effectiveness of these therapies, which served as further influence for the choice act. Consequently, my staff and I are recently wondering that the city could partner with the state and or federal governments for funds that can preserve the Walmart parcel to host an ongoing therapeutic program for military veterans, first responders, as well as the uninsured, underinsured suffering with ravages of psychological trauma, severe anxiety and or depression and or staff of agency serving this population suffering from burnout, which leads to premature industry dropout. A sad reality for those involved treating these populations with little additional resources or support, both of which our programs can provide as we do national workshops and retreats as well. Please take a moment to imagine all the change city officials could make in the lives of those who have given the most of themselves to help keep us safe as well as Tarpon Springs in dire need of psychological, emotional support. Finally, such a project would provide support as well as local nonprofit equine rescue barns, which lease their equines. Many facing bankruptcy and closure in these times. What will become of the equines they've rescued from kill pens and lovely cared otherwise? We sincerely appreciate your time and consideration. Regretfully, I am unable to meeting live as I have back telehealth sessions with my clients on weekdays, eaves. So someone kindly read this into the record. For more information, you can find our program on psychology today. Find a therapist type in EQ solutions or via eqsolutions.com. For more information on professional equine assisted psychotherapy, see YouTube's gala impacted parts one and two, about twenty minutes total. We thank you so very much for your and thoughtful consideration. Sincerely yours, Dr. Nerline Williamson, staff collaborative counseling center of Tarpon Springs, twenty six, twenty five Keystone Road. Dash Next email. City clerk, please read this into the record for commission meeting. As a resident of Tarpon Springs over thirty years, we are more than concerned and upset regarding proposed for an apartment complex along the Inklot River. Citizen family feels this project is only impacting less than one acre. It is much more impact than she states. Acts on traffic. These buildings impact more than one acre wildlife and wetlands, more pollution, flooding to adjacent areas, school crowding issues and so much more. Another concern is her feeling that impact fees should be used toward building another necessary road for this complex. This is not what impact fees are about. Also, there is no fix for traffic problems and environmental problems this complex will create, including problems for fire and emergency services access. This is one of the few undisturbed lands in Pinellas County that must be saved. The statement by Armstrong attorney for Morgan Group is incorrect when he says that at some point this property will be developed with something due to development pressure. We as citizens of Tarpon Springs will continue to fight the destruction of one of the few areas in Pinellas County that remains and must be preserved. The commission needs to listen to us, concerned loyal Tarpon residents, not a Houston developer who has hired Cindy Tarpani to assist them in destroying our land. Efforts instead must be made to preserve this property as has been requested many times ignored. Perhaps this whole issue is about politics that need to and must change for the betterment of Tarpon Springs as a whole. Thank you in advance for voting no on this proposal and the amended access proposal of Hayes Road. Concerned citizen Laura and Jack John Zach, residents of Tarpon Springs. Next email. Dear Commissioners since nineteen ninety nine witnessing growth in the area, I would I consider was good and bad. I must now address the proposed development of four hundred port complex along the Inklot River emphasizes bad growth. Although what I say is not earth shattering or new, perhaps one more voice of opposition will lead you to reconsider your opinion on this project. In my time here, living on northern border Pinellas County, I have seen the impact of U S nineteen traffic to cause huge changes in the area. At one time, there was nothing more than a stop sign to complete a left turn hand turn onto westbound Beckett Way from northbound U S nineteen, and it is adequate. Now there are two additional lights just between Beckett Way and Tarpon Avenue to accommodate the the car. Five years ago, my daughter on Tarpon Avenue that started at nine, even then I would have to allow twenty five minutes to get across the Inklot Bridge on southbound U S nineteen for what should be a mere five minute drive. Fast forward to today and nothing has improved, even without the thousands of Canadian and European snowbirds. We are staying home due to COVID restrictions. The additional four hundred plus apartments I would estimate to be two cars per apartment would only cause even more madness to traffic along the one point five mile stretch of impacted roadways. Developer suggestion of Hayes Road extension would not be a viable solution. This would only lead to the city exercising eminent domain for easement rights at more cost to to city taxpayers. And to have such a bold statement from the developer that the city should use impact fees for all this is insulting. It's an additional impact fee of five hundred thousand for this Hayes Road solution should could be assessed. Said to developer opposed work on the property when a Walmart was under consideration, what has changed in her thinking now? One can only assume. Let me now address the environmental concerns I have. Yes, it has been discussed. Tortoise nests will be displaced, eagle's nest disturbed, wetlands removed, trees felled and who knows what flooding issues introduce? And although the argument is that it's all with in federal guidelines, does that make it right for our community? Tarpon Springs is a beautiful city for the treasures of the sponge docks, spring value Fred Howard, Sunton and Anderson Park, as well as Inklot River itself. All these revolve around our natural geographical beauty. Should we now strive to preserve and add to the inherent splendor of the area continuing on the proposed development site in the least last bit of open space? If one were to drive the entire length of U S nineteen in Pinellas County, I challenge you to find another spot with the natural open expanse on both sides of U S nineteen. It is the last station of natural land where one can breathe a sigh of relief after seeing all the ugly strip malls of U S nineteen. Why take it away from our city? What about school signs for children? Can Tarpon Springs on entry or Booker Creek accommodate an influx of new students? Perhaps the luxury apartments? The targeted renter demographic does expect children, but has anyone from the city even considered this in your rush to obtain tax revenue? Where are the studies for this? Tarpon Springs can do better and must do better to preserve this last bit of beauty and make it preserve or wonderful park with river access and trails. Tarpon Springs does not need a four story apartment complex with revised zoning laws just happen. That will take down the integrity of what makes our Tarpon Springs special. The recent E Korea apartment complex removed even more green sprays from our city. Don't strip more. One last simple question. Has anyone in your office even approached Walmart for disposition of the property? Perhaps with the history of civil involvement, they would entertain some sort of approach that would enhance our reputation, get the property off the books and make it beneficial to the city. Is right for our community. Vote no on the proposed development. Sincerely, Sandra Kowalski, seven ten B side drive, Tarpon Springs. Next email. My name is Elizabeth Franco and I am a resident of original River Watch Development just north of proposed development. I am not well versed enough to speak to the conversation issues presented by this proposed development. However, I feel that I am eminently qualified to speak to the impact of the increased traffic the complex would bring. My six years that I have owned my home in River I found that the only downside of living here is ingress and egress to our particularly during morning and afternoon rush hours, which I typically experience from six eight thirty A M. Thirty A M. And again, from three P M. To six thirty P M. River Watch only has one access point during these times and extremely difficult to exit the development and merge into traffic. I have often spent as long as ten minutes waiting to squeeze into the nearest lane and then only due to the kindness of an alert and aware driver. Even with the billboards blocking people in a turn, I'm sorry, even with the bollards blocking people in the turn lane entering River Watch Boulevard from bypass development and gaining advantage of by legally passing traffic on the right. I have personally experienced driving sneak through and knocking down the poles to bypass the traffic, nearly hitting the first car waiting to merge onto nineteen from the development. Once I am able to enter onto nineteen, I have often had to travel two lights before I'm safely able to merge left to turn ahead southbound to my planned destination. I've also observed vehicles exiting Phoenix Avenue and cutting straight across all three lanes to traffic to access the U turn at Lois Avenue, nearly causing accidents instead of entering in the near lane and merging when safe to do so as is the law. I understand that there will be a traffic controlled installed at the entrance to the new development to a traffic flow into nineteen. I'm hoping that if this is so, it is pressure activated when there is someone attempting to exit the apartment complex to eliminate useless stoppage of the flow on nineteen. Furthermore, I feel very neglected as a resident of the association of similar size that the same consideration not is not afforded to the appro approximately hundred sixty tax paying owners at River Watch. I understand that there are four hundred and four proposed units in the new complex and there will be many vehicles, but the homes in River Watch are larger homes and they are anywhere from one to five vehicles per home. There are dozen of buses, visitors, delivery drivers, service vehicles and others who visit the station residents on a daily basis. I strongly feel that we should be afforded the same consideration for safe egress from our grounds as is proposed for the Inklot project. I know that adding these lane controls could create more stop and go in a traffic pattern, but if properly planned in time, they would make entering nineteen much safer for us all. Please note that these are my personal opinions. They have not been presented to nor reviewed by our board of directors. They are not representative of the views of this project, if any, of the association itself. itself. Thank you for your attention, this consideration. Please read this email into the record. Regards Elizabeth Franco. Next email. My name is Kim Myers and I reside at 1389 Cell Harbor Circle Tarpon Springs. The board commissioners, as a resident of Tarpon Springs and a lover of nature, I implore you to destroy this project. Why? Why would you destroy this beautiful parcel of land and take away one of the less remaining natural habitats in Pinellas County? Why? Why would you take away the home of many deer, bald eagles, gopher tortoises and other wildlife? Why? Why would you remove over 1,000 trees? Why not use the preservation trust grant with the that was offered to you? The community could use this land for multi-use park for everyone to enjoy. Why? Why develop this natural habitat when developers can tear down the vacant building in the area and build there? Why? Why create more traffic on an existing F rated road? Why? Why destroy more wetlands to develop Hayes Road? Jasmine Road is a narrow white wine road which dead ends into a beautiful community of Cell Harbor. It's absolute, it absolutely cannot handle the increased amount of traffic expected from this development project. I beg you to consider this. Why give in to these developers? Now's the time to do what is right. You have the power to stop this. Next email. To the city of Tarpon Springs, 10 people, five board of commissioners and five planning and zoning members have voted on this project as of date. I am the sole no vote as a member of the planning and zoning board. The environmental sensitivity of the property is definitely an issue, but my primary point is to focus at the P and Z meeting was the traffic issue spilling out onto US 19. The DOT will not allow a light at that spot on 19. Therefore, the approximately 800 cars will need to perform U-turns to go south from also do U-turn to enter the complex if they're coming from the north. Did you ever play Frogger? If not, you had to get a frog across lanes of busy traffic without getting splattered. But my concern is that this would become human Frogger. People leaving the complex will have to navigate three lanes of busy US Highway 19 traffic in order to head back south. The biggest difference is that if you get splattered in Frogger, it's it'll only cost you a quarter to play again. Best of luck, John Michael Colianis, planning and zoning board member. Next email. Pamela Drake. My husband and I are five months new to the city of Tarpon Springs. What drew us here were all the beautiful rivers and waterways scattered throughout the city and surrounding areas. After reading the above information and a couple of the links provided, my husband and I without hesitation would both prefer not to have a 400 unit apartment complex constructed in our new resident city. We agree wholeheartedly with every bulleted remark, including sharing the deep desire to save one of the last undeveloped properties in Tarpon Springs. A park would be a much better use of this land. Please feel free to include this in it in the record. Thank you Pam and Kit Drake, Tarpon Springs residents. Next email. Just because you can doesn't mean you be can you? Just because you can approve a project that will cheat current humans and future humans of visually and physically enjoying 73 acres of wetlands, nature, wildlife, nexus to the Anclot River in the Gulf of Mexico, does it mean you should? Just because you can approve a project that will destroy more than 1,000 trees that are part of tree city, you say city doesn't mean you should. Just because you can approve a project that will harm, kill and disturb protected animals and bird species and protected plants and vegetation doesn't mean you should. Just because you can approve the development upon a sensitive and scarce natural resource that was fiercely fought to be protected and preserved in two and five doesn't mean you should. Just because you can approve a project that thousands of citizens are opposing doesn't mean you should. Just because you can approve a project that appears was orchestrated by a few for the benefit of a few to the detriment of thousands, you should. Just because 2020, the city commissioners and the mayor rehired a 2014 outs city employee from a previous and years ago citizen outraged city project a month prior to a developer bringing a 2020 controversial project to the city regarding the delicate previous and years ago controversial piece of land and placing that rehired employee in a supervisory role for 2020 controversial project. You should. Just because you can attempt to incompetently rush through and push a project when the city continues to demonstrate they do not even know the correct name of the project, doesn't mean you should. All the city documents and the city website pages and the city commission paperwork repeatedly continually show the project name. Anclot Harbor singular, Anclot Harbors plural, which is it? We do not know. And even worse, the people creating the project, the people in charge of the project and the people in charge of voting on project do not know the correct name of the project. Just because you could sit in front of your fellow citizens and listen to their pleas and ignore their pleas doesn't mean you should. Just because you can choose to make decisions that saddens many thousands of peoples doesn't mean you should. Just because you could attempt to justify your decision in hopes of easing your future guilty conscience about your part in the destruction of 73 acres of delicate land that should be preserved doesn't mean you should. Just because you can choose to prevent and cheat your fellow citizens from the opportunity to work together to apply for grants and raise funds to purchase and preserve the 73 acres of Walmart that the city of Tarpon Springs website currently shows on the properties for sale page with a price of 6,300,000 doesn't mean you should. Just because you can choose to prevent and cheat your fellow citizens from helping the city of Tarpon Springs and are helping Pinellas County to purchase 73 acres from Walmart in order to create a nature park kayak area and possibly a boat launch area doesn't mean you should. Just because you can be cold hearted and uncaring about God's children, God's creatures and God's land doesn't mean you should. Be a steward, be a good steward, be a steward of land preservation, be a steward for the benefit of future generations. Please not forget you were voted in to represent the people. Please hear the pleas of the people. This was submitted anonymously, but the email was from the tarpon springs truth@protonmail.com. Next email. I'm in opposition of the building of Anclot Apartments, Alt 19 in Anclot River. I am a Tarpon Springs resident, Robert Mack. Next email. Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioner Commissioners. My husband and I would like to express our extreme concern regarding the development of the proposed Anclot Harbor apartment complex on US 19 in Tarpon Springs. We can find no beneficial reasons for this large populated complex to be added to an already overcrowded F rated hazardous US 19. Our concerns are as follow, the negative environmental impact of the huge project and a primary concern. There is virtually no remaining open space in Pinellas County and along a sea of concrete while driving on US 19. These 64 untouched acres of land are home to a diverse variety of wildlife such as eagles, gopher tortoises, waiting birds, deer, as well as other wildlife which would be destroyed, relocated to the benefit of developers. Although the developer states they would build 660 feet away from the eagle's nest, there is still excessive noise and disturbance to the nest which will likely keep the eagles away. The plans for this land are to remove 1,217 trees. And although they say they will replant trees, these trees will likely be small and not nearly as numerous. We would like to see natural land such as property left unrequested and request the developers try to locate already developed land with vacant buildings. Unfortunately, the past year has forced many businesses to close their doors and many buildings stand ugly and empty. Why not try to redevelop one of these properties? We are residents of Cell Harbor, which is located immediately adjacent to the proposed exit to this proposed apartment complex. Cell Harbor is a peaceful tucked away neighborhood, which is why we purchased our home here. The community is located at the end of the narrow winding road on which we have had several near accidents from people racing too quickly around corners. The demographic demographic of apartment complexes tend to be of a younger population who tends to drive fast. We have been informed that over 2,000 vehicle movements a day may be generated from this 404 unit complex and that is unimaginable and frightening. The construction required to make this country county road accessible to this volume of traffic would be a nightmare. We are also concerned that our quiet hidden oasis will have quite a few more people walking and driving through exposing us to certain more crime. Although we are primarily concerned with the danger impact right outside of a residence, the dangers continue are numerous with over 2,100 additional trips per day on this already F rated roadway. Hopefully, the city of Tarpon Springs will decide to place the value of human life as well as the environmental impact over monetary gain. We were made aware that this property was on Pinellas County's wish list for preservation in 2018. Why not work to make this wish a reality? Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Jerry and Gary Billingsley. Next email. Dear Mayor Commissioners, I live in Brittany Parks, north of proposed building site for the 400 unit apartment complex. When I moved to Tarpon Springs 10 years ago, the Walmart vote had just been decided. It was my understanding when I purchased my home that the land was would be earmarked for city park. I'm opposed to the development of this land use for the following reasons. Traffic impact, the degradation of wetlands, wildlife in the area displaced unnecessarily, opposed to the pollution on the Anclot River, opposed to the obscene high rise building built on wetlands. I am opposed to the deforestation of our green space. 10 years ago, when Walmart wanted to a building on the land and city voted against it, nothing has changed with the since that vote took place. And Tarpon Springs has a multitude of broken down buildings, closed businesses and rundown space along US 19. If the Houston based company really wants to build, they could take over some of those spaces instead of destroying our untouched green space. Finally, the most and most importantly, following the story of the Douglas Land in Dunedin. The city of Dunedin and Pinellas County have worked incredibly hard to procure the capital to save the green space in Pinellas County. Why would Tarpon Springs give up their beautiful green space so quickly to the highest bidder? Perhaps we should follow the example city of Dunedin and preserve what we can in Pinellas County beauty. Perhaps we should build the long promised and overdue park that would attract tourists and visitors to our city and help local businesses without dropping a bomb in our infrastructure. Thank you for your time and consideration. Please vote to keep Tarpon Springs beautiful. Thank you, Rachel Townsend. Next email. As a citizen of Tarpon Springs and a user of highway US 19, cannot imagine how you would allow a product of that magnitude to be built. The amount of traffic added to that already burdened area and the thought that residents will leave the complex safely into oncoming traffic is a grim oversight, a grim oversight. Please think about the loss you will be surely permitting. The loss of annual habitat in a second very concerning issue. I will be reuniting with my friends of the Anclot River to fight the project as well. Brian Casado, Palm Avenue, Tarpon Springs.
That was all the emails. I'm getting this email upstairs.
Okay, Mayor, we're we're at a point now, then. If you want to take a break, we can take a
Yes, we'd like to take a 10 minutes recess.
Okay, and then we'll come back and we'll start with the closing summaries and arguments.
We are now reconvening the BOC meeting at 6:13 PM. Mr. Trask, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now is the opportunity for city staff to make any closing comments, followed by Mr. Armstrong, followed by Ms. Graham.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. In summary this evening, I would like to provide a brief overview and some highlight a few points for the board's consideration of the Anclaw Harbor project. The applicant has submitted an application to rezone the property from general business to residential plan development with an associated preliminary development plan and supporting documentation, including a preliminary landscape plan, tree mitigation plans, stormwater design, preliminary drainage plan, endangered and threatened species report, wetlands impact and mitigation plans, traffic impact analysis and mitigation plans, and hurricane shelter analysis. The proposed project contains 64 acres, excluding submerged lands. Of that, 42 acres are uplands, 22 acres are wetlands, and proposes to construct 404 multifamily units on the site. Approximately 21 acres of wetlands and 14 acres of uplands will be preserved, comprising approximately 54% of the total site. Of the upland acres to be preserved, 12 of those are classified as significant upland habitat by the comprehensive plan. The upland areas to be utilized for trails and passive recreation use are proposed to be placed in Recreation Open Space category. It's noted that there are some intensive recreation, more intensive recreation uses available under this designation. However, these uses on the site are controlled by the planned development process, and any significant changes would require an amendment to the approved plan. The application exceeds the minimum open space preservation requirements of both the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. Importantly, the comprehensive plan identifies that there is no deficiency in level of service requirements for neighborhood or regional parks. The property is currently designated on the future land use map as Commercial General and Residential Office Retail. These designations would allow for 485 units on the property and would still allow for additional office development rights as well. The applicant's proposal to the use of the planned development process will reduce the allowable density henceforth to 404 units and prevent any additional development, again, unless the development plan is amended and approved by the Board of Commissioners. The current zoning of general business in combination with the future land use map categories currently could allow for a much more intense development on the site by right. The city's technical review committee has extensively reviewed the application, in addition to myself, Paul Smith, the Public Services Director, and the city's consulting engineers, Rick Aguilar and Linda Hess, have addressed the board regarding utility availability, operational aspects of the proposed access to US 19, the preliminary grading and drainage of the site, and the ability of the city to provide required services to the property. Additionally, Joel Provenzano from FDOT testified as to the safety of the operational aspects of the proposed offset U-turn lane access to the site. The proposed design is provided for protection of the eagle's nest identified on-site, and the applicant will be required to adhere to all state and federal regulations and permitting requirements for eagle protection. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with all six planned development review criteria of the Land Development Code, applicable rezoning criteria, and compliance with the city's comprehensive plan regarding sea level rise and coastal high-hazard area policies of the comprehensive plan. While the comprehensive plan contains a policy that seeks to direct population concentrations away from coastal, the coastal high-hazard area, there are existing residential density rights on the property that have been established, which precedes Florida's Growth Management and Community Planning Act legislation. If the applicant were seeking to increase the density on the property through a land use map amendment, this policy would certainly come into play. However, in this instance, the applicant is actually voluntarily reducing the available density on the property, which is consistent with this policy. Similarly, the comprehensive plan policies regarding consideration of sea level rise are only applied to future land use map decisions, which are not part of this application. The applicant is seeking two waivers as part of the project, an increase in allowable height from 45 feet to 53 feet. This increased height allows for clustering of the units into five buildings rather than construction of an additional building and reduces impervious surface and stormwater treatment area. The increased height is viewed as compatible, given the separation of the site from any adjacent residential development. The second waiver that was requested was to allow for one vehicle or access point where a secondary access would be required if feasible. Staff supports the original request based upon a specific review criteria of the planned development district, which states the design shall not create excessive traffic on minor streets and residential districts outside the district. Additionally, the proposed waiver would protect significant features of the site, including tidal wetlands and significant upland habitat. The applicant has submitted an additional condition of approval for the board's consideration regarding a secondary access for Hayes Road right-of-way. Staff has made suggested amendments to that condition and supports this additional condition of approval. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this application on November 16, 2020, and voted to approve the application, with one member dissenting. In closing, based upon evidence submitted in the record during the public hearing process, the initial staff report, as well as all staff-reported addendums and additional information that has been provided, the staff recommendation is to approve ordinance 2020-34, incorporating the applicant's additional conditions of approval as amended by city staff. So regarding the conditions of approval, earlier this week, the applicant provided to the board a set of agreed-upon amendments to the original conditions that are listed as the original conditions of approval listed in Section 3 of Ordinance 20-34. Staff concurs with these additional conditions of approval, and the draft revised ordinance incorporating the applicant's conditions have been provided for the board's discussion. I do want to walk through some corrections that do need, that needs to be made to this document that was provided to the board on the dais that says revised to include applicant's conditions, and I provided this for discussion purposes to help with all the conditions that have been discussed so far. So, and there's a few things that do need to be corrected. On the condition number four, but buffer adjacent to the Anclaw River shall remain and be managed as undisturbed uplands, hardwood conifer mix and shall not be graded. There's an additional sentence that fell out somewhere, so I want to read into the record. This was in the staff-reported addendum that I'm reading from. So the condition number four, the additional sentence is, reads as the 50-foot buffer adjacent to the Anclaw River shall remain and be managed as undisturbed uplands, in quotation, excuse me, in parentheses, hardwood conifer mix and shall not be graded within the 25-foot wetland buffer required by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The other correction on condition number nine, what's on the dais reads as detailed plans for utility connections and infrastructure, including wastewater force main construction, shall be submitted with the final planned development plan, along with document and coordination from all applicable agencies and landowners affected by the construction. There's additional sentences that need to be added to that. It says a final development plan submittal that includes onsite infrastructure may only be scheduled for review by the technical review committee. Submittal of the plans for off-site, for off-site public infrastructure will be required to be submitted and reviewed prior to scheduling for review by the Board of Commissioners. And then the last correction under condition number 22, and conditions 19 through 28 of the new conditions, or the conditions of, added conditions that were provided by the applicant, condition number 22, that 100,000 should be marked out, that should have been stricken through. So it should read an additional 509,000. With that, I think everything is into the record. I apologize for the mistakes that are in this ordinance. If you want to take, after an appropriate time, a few-second break, I can make those corrections and redistribute it just to make it clear. But with that, I'll stop with my closing. Thank you.
So it's now Mr. Armstrong's opportunity to make a closing statement or argument, summary, however he wants to approach it.
Good evening. I'm Ed Armstrong. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hillward Henderson. We are located at 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 in Clearwater. We really thank you for your time and your patience. You've been excellent listeners, and we appreciate the attention you've paid to this case. As you know, you have two applications in front of you this evening, and as you would expect, I'm going to open up with a reminder to base your decision solely upon competent substantial evidence. And for sake of brevity, later in my presentation, I may refer to CSE. That's just an acronym for competent substantial evidence. We continue to insist as a threshold matter that the concerned citizens for Tarpon Springs, Ms. Graham's clients, do not have standing and that they are not affected parties. Mr. Trask agreed with that assertion at the last meeting and ruled accordingly. That said, they were given every opportunity to participate in that hearing as if they were. I'm going to review some of the testimony you've heard from the speakers in this case. Let's start with Ms. Vincent, your planning director. She is a professional planner, and her testimony clearly rises to the level of competent substantial evidence. The essence of her testimony was the applications were compliant with the comprehensive plan and your Land Development Code. Next, I'd like to reference the testimony of Joel Provenzano, Provenzano from DOT District 7. He is the access management administrator. Clearly an expert in traffic, he issues the permits. He stated that the offset U-turns proposed for our project were, quote, "an innovative approach recommended by the DOT." He testified that U-turns are safer than left turns. He also indicated that our project provides adequate gaps in traffic on US 19 because of the lights located on US 19 at Beckett Way and Spruce. He indicated that this design will work successfully and handle traffic for the project. He further said that DOT was completely satisfied with a single access point on US 19, and also noted that a second access point on US 19 was not advisable due to an increase in the number of potential conflict points. Following Mr. Provenzano, you heard from Christopher Patton, a professional engineer, who is our traffic expert, highly qualified, his credentials are already in the record. He testified that the project was compliant with all applicable traffic regulations. He performed extensive gap studies, demonstrating enough time for cars leaving the project to safely access the U-turn to the north. I would note that the city's transportation expert, your outside folks, specifically Linda Hess from American Consulting, stated that, quote- stated that, quote, "From the data collected and the number of trips predicted for the development, there appears to be a sufficient number of gaps on US-19 for the proposed development traffic." So that's three traffic experts whose testimony is essentially the same. You also heard from Cindy T. R. Panning, who is an established expert in the field of land use planning. She testified that the application was consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. She noted also, "This is a downzoning." I somehow think that gets lost in the discussion about what's going on here. This is a downzoning. The traffic impact is estimated to be 20% of the traffic generated by the maximum development potential. This is, we have produced a very sensitive design, taking into account the natural environment. We are protecting 1,900 feet of Anclot River frontage, preserving 21 of the 22 acres of wetlands, and complying with all requirements for protecting the eagle's nests located near the property. All of these experts explained in detail how our applications are consistent with the comp plan, the land development code, and every one of our experts' testimony rises to the level of CSE. I'm going to move on to the testimony of the opponents. Our opponents utilized a shotgun approach with concerned citizens submitting a 556 filing, page, filing the day of the last hearing. While quite large in volume, it is certainly lacking in substance. There are very generalized statements reflecting a lack of diligence exploring the facts of our applications. What did we submit? What do our applications say? Apparently, they were put forth on the hope that this commission might latch on to some buzzwords and divert its focus from the legal standard of CSE. Let me give you an example. There are many, but I'll give you a couple of examples here of the witnesses put forth by concerned citizens and what their testimony was. First, a letter from Dr. Brooke Hansen, who is a professor with the Patel College of Global Sustainability at USF. Lengthy exhibit submitted. Her area of interest is sea level rise. And her final statement, and I'm paraphrasing here, "This project should not move forward based on the civilite, sea level rise vulnerability issues alone." I wonder how much time she put into her analysis? Did she visit the site? Did she take time to review the Tarpon Springs comp plan? Apparently not, because your comp plan is very specific on this point. You only consider sea level rise if there's a land use map amended proposed. That's not what we're asking for. All Dr. Hansen had to do was to read the comp plan. This type of shallow testimony, typical concerned citizens' case, is clearly not CSE. But undoubtedly, the most interesting testimony submitted by concerned citizens was that which was provided by Ms. Graham's acquaintance from Howlandale Beach, Mr. Eric Houston. Mr. Houston testified, he lives in Los Angeles. He's never visited the property. In his affidavit, under oath, he swears that, quote, "Access improvements to US-19 includes a northbound deceleration turn lane and median R-cut U-turns to be installed north and south of the project entrance." And then he dumped several hundred pages of information about R-cuts and safety data into the record. While he's hyperventilating over R-cuts, he completely misses the boat. Our project doesn't have any R-cuts. It has offset left turn medians, a different configuration. How could he miss something so critically important? Because he wasn't analyzing the facts of our application while he is attempting to influence you in making your decision. Same paragraph, Mr. Houston states that the R-cut turns would not only be the first in Pinellas County, but one of the first in the state of Florida. Again, we're not doing R-cut, but the fact of the matter is, our traffic expert noted three other such configurations on the same road in the same county, right here in Pinellas. I could address other holes in the testimony, but there's really no point. Mr. Houston's affidavit and testimony clearly are not CSE, and under cross-examination, he was totally discredited. My friend, Mr. Wagenfor, testified. To his credit, he conceded he was not a traffic expert, clearly not CSE. Our opponents offered no testimony from an expert in land use planning, no CSE on that subject. In summary, there was a lot of volume submitted in opposition, but minimal substance, and no CSE presented by our opponents. As you know, it's very rare that I would ever cite a legal case while making an argument, but I found one in doing some research for this that I thought perfectly addresses the record that has been established. The case is called Catherine's Bay versus Fagan. It's from the First District Court of Appeals. I'm taking a sentence verbatim from the holding. This is about lay witnesses, and what do you do with lay witness testimony? Lay witnesses may offer their views in land use cases about matters not requiring expert testimony. Lay witnesses may testify about the natural beauty of an area, because that is not an issue requiring expertise. Just the key part. But their speculation about potential traffic problems, light and noise pollution, and general unfavorable impacts of a proposed land use are not considered CSE. The CSE provided in this case clearly establishes the project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the land development code. Last, but certainly not least, the discussion with respect to Hayes Road. Your land development code requires a second access point where feasible. We believe it's not feasible. A second access point to Hayes Road would require a significant destruction of wetlands on the site. We designed the site to minimize the impact of wetlands. The right-of-way of Hayes Road is only 40 feet. All of the Hayes Road right-of-way is in Pinellas County. None is in the city of Tarpon Springs. The Morgan Group does not have the power of eminent domain. The CSE presented on this issue concludes that secondary access is not necessary. The testimony of the neighbors was, they don't want the road either. We believe that requiring the Morgan Group to physically build the road out is out of proportion to the impact of our development, and requiring the construction of Hayes Road would violate Chapter 70.45 of the Florida statutes. The US Constitution is discussed in the Noah and Dolan cases decided by the US Supreme Court. Make no mistake, we are willing to contribute financially for the project, as reflected in the proposed condition. And even though there's testimony, we believe pretty compelling testimony, the road is not necessary. What we really can't take is being held responsible for the construction of the roadway. So we really hope to gain your approval tonight. We believe that we've carried our burden, and I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Now would be the opportunity for Ms. Graham, who is in attendance by audio or Zoom. Ms. Graham, are you there? Mr. Jump, could you let her in if she's not up?
She is there.
Okay, Ms. Graham, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's great. Go ahead and make your presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Jane Graham. I'm attorney and founder of Sunshine City Law, located at 737 Main Street, Suite 100, Safety Harbor, Florida 34695. I represent the concerned citizens of Tarpon Springs, also known as Friends of Anclot River, and we maintain that we are an affected party in this matter. We are nonpartisan citizens who are guardians of Anclot River. A substantial amount of members enjoy the area adjacent to the river for various activities and use their collective voice to preserve the unique identity, small-town character, and cultural heritage of the community. Tonight, Commissioner, you are asked to decide whether or not to approve the applicant's proposal in this quasi-judicial hearing. And as Mr. Armstrong said, yes, you're looking at competent substantial evidence. So let's look at the evidence that has been presented to you. It's the applicant who has the burden. They have to make a prima facie case that they have met all the criteria in the code. And if you listen, ask yourself, is this competent? Is this substantial? Is this relevant that a reasonable mind would actually find adequate support or conclusion? You have your common sense, you have good judgment, and you have your soul. And I'm going to explain through a series of discussions why the criteria for rezoning, conditional use, and waiver do not meet the code based on the issues related to traffic, conservation, coastal issue, and recreation. First, let's talk about traffic, the traffic analysis. The safety of crossing three lanes of traffic on US-19 with the new offset turn. The burden has not been met. First, let's talk about the gap analysis. Have they met the burden to demonstrate competent substantial evidence? They argue that it's an insufficient sample. Data collection for the gap study was only collected on Thursday, October 1st, 2020, during 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, per the Kimley-Horn report. This is one day. FDOT's Mr. Provenzano testified that usually, at least in a traffic light situation, they would look to things like a three-day count. So one-day count, is that competent and substantial? The applicant's traffic expert, Mr. Chris Hatton, said that he did not include wet conditions in this analysis. It was just a single day, and it was dry. Mr. Hatton also mentioned that there was one delivery van observed as the example. Is this sufficient? Is this a large enough sample size to capture every type of vehicle on the road? Size, ability to maneuver the road, lines of sight, quality of the driver? Let's look to the issue of COVID. The sample was taken during COVID when traffic was unpredictable and lighter than usual. And we know from FDOT and the applicant expert's testimony that COVID made an impact on traffic. Now, it is debatable how much of a decrease was made through the traffic, but we do know that people were working from home, and there were a few visitors from out of town. What about the city? The city, you heard from the city's consultant, Linda Hess, the last time on, at the December 15th meeting. She wasn't at the meeting last week. And what she said is that the city originally verified the gap study with their own limited drone footage. And it was just on a single morning, from 7:18 to 7:52 AM on a Monday, December 14th. The traffics, the, Ms. Hess initially said that the AM footage wasn't enough and wanted to see footage during peak in the afternoon. And said that usually, traffic count or data are collected on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, but this time it was collected on a Monday. She also said if the northbound direction of US-19 is the peak direction in the PM period, new data should be collected in the PM peak to account for this. Okay, so at the last meeting, the city expert, well, at the last meeting, Ms. Hess wasn't there. And the applicant did provide some additional footage, but you've yet to hear from Ms. Hess again as to whether or not this footage was reviewed and okay. Let's talk about the gap, the five-second, seven-second, 10-second. How much is needed? And this goes again to weighing, is it competent? Is it substantial? Is it relevant that you would find it accurate? When asked if there's any standard to reference the five-second gap, the FDOT expert said that they will normally leave it to our engineering discretion. Are you satisfied that they've provided this competent substantial evidence? Or is that conclusory? The applicant supplemented the evidence later with seven and 10 seconds. But again, where is the city expert testimony and analysis on this? You've never heard again from Ms. Hess. Do you have all the answers that you need? Let's look to the broader question of safety. Can you cross the three lanes of traffic in the times evaluated? The applicant relies on data related to a turn from a minor street to a highway, not a three-lane crossover. The city consultant in the January 6, 2021 comments specifically requested in comment four, "Please provide information from a similar study completed for FDOT or an ITE FDOT or FHWA manual reference for five seconds that is an adequate gap duration for crossing three lanes of traffic." So crossing three lanes of traffic. Here, the applicant cites to an FDOT Table 8-1 that talks about traffic on a minor street for a two-stage crossing. It doesn't address crossing three lanes of traffic on a major highway. Again, are you satisfied with this? This is people's safety at stake. What, how long is needed to change in between the lanes? On the contrary, concerned citizens presented testimony from traffic planner, Eric Houston. He testified to the danger of crossing three lanes of traffic at such an intersection. And aside from semantics of what you call it, an R-cut or offset, he provided testimony as to why it's dangerous. And remember, it's not concerned citizens' burden to prove that it's dangerous. It's applicant's burden to show how it complies with their criteria. If the driver or series of drivers don't make the turn based on the road conditions and what other impacts might happen to properties in the area? For example, would drivers head south on, would drivers on 19, would they end up going around St. Luke's and going through to make a turn? And actually, Commissioner asked this question, and the answer was no. And this just goes to other questions to this. Let's talk about the level of service. US-19 is in the area of Level of Service F. And we did submit this. This is Exhibit J, Nellis County Level of Service map. At minimum, the Level of Service F should raise some serious questions. According to our traffic planner, Mr. Houston, it means traffic is forced or has breakdown flow, and traffic demand exceeds capacity. The applicant tries to ignore the issue of the level of service by citing the city's code, Section 122.11, to say, "Well, the developers are not required to meet adopted level of service standard." However, this is a diversion from the real issue that the introduction of 2,198 daily trips will cause traffic gridlock for existing residents and add additional stress to fire and police response times. And ultimately, when you're making your decision of the criteria for rezoning, you're looking at impacts, will it adversely impact things like transportation in the area? So it's not just compliance with 122.11. It's looking in the broader view of impacts. Mr. Provenzano testified that we have no concern that this will handle traffic now and into the future, because Pinellas County is pretty developed, and we're not expecting massive growth on US-19. When I asked him in cross-examination if he looked at Pasco County's growth directly to the north and potential impacts to traffic, he punted and said, "Well, no, I didn't talk to FDOT planner." Are you satisfied with this answer, knowing how Pasco County is growing and the potential impact on this specific area on the border on US-19? Again, these are questions of competent substantial evidence. Just because of "expert" said it's true, you have to evaluate that. Does it make sense? Is it relevant? Is this really accurate and enough for it to convince you? More conflict points are introduced as well, looking at the possibility for more danger from these conflict points. And finally, I want to talk on the traffic about common sense and firsthand observations. And it's funny that Mr. Armstrong mentioned the Catherine Bay's case, and I am familiar with that legal case as to this type of layperson testimony. And I would counter that there's other case law that says that citizen testimony on a zoning matter is perfectly permissible and constitutes substantial competent evidence so long as it is fact-based. And that's the Metrodade County versus Blumenthal case. And in this case, And in this case, you have a video taken by Mr. Carl Wagenfor that shows the driver's eye view of US-19 around 3:00 PM, which demonstrates significant difference from the drone footage, where it's much easier for the benefit of a full aerial view to make a decision. Here, in contrast, the driver's eye view shows how difficult it is to make a judgment. That's the type of fact-based evidence that you are allowed to consider. That is competent substantial evidence. Don't be scared to consider that. On top of that, you heard numerous public comments today from individuals who live on US-19 in the immediate area and cited specific factual-based concerns as to their specific observations of traffic. And again, that speaks to traffic safety and gridlock. So I ask you that this type of testimony is allowed to be considered. Now, mere generalized statements of opposition are to be disregarded, but fact-based testimony is to be considered. Getting to the second point on traffic of Hayes Road. First of all, you're in a catch-22 of one entrance versus two entrances. And are you even satisfied from what you've seen that either is a good alternative? One entrance, you've heard testimony and public comments that it would be, there would be dangers for hurricane evacuations, fire, ingress egress. It could be inadequate. Now, as far as the second entrance on Hayes Road, you heard observations that this hasn't really been looked at as far as wetland destruction and other environmental concerns. So it's, you know, there is a kind of draft drawing, but you don't really have enough information on that. And on top of that, you also today heard numerous very factual-based testimony from members of the public who live and use the Jasmine Avenue area and the impact that such a road on Hayes Road would have. So as far as the traffic, I mean, that's, the applicant has the burden to show that they met criteria. Here, rezoning and conditional use criteria require the project will not adversely impact or exceed the city's capacity for transportation. Applicant has tried to divert your attention to say that traffic isn't as bad as it would be for a big box store or other giant commercial development, so it's an improvement, but this is like a magician's sleight of hand because you're charged at looking at the adverse impacts of this specific project, not speculate as to what else could be on the property. If you were required to consider alternatives under this section, the alternative should be something like a park, which numerous experts and the public desire, which was also totally ignored. The waiver criteria has not been clearly met either. The applicant argues it's to protect the environmental area of wetlands around Hayes Road, but staff hasn't quantified impacts. It's also apparent that the discussion, as far as the second entrance on 19, was not fully discussed with FDOT, and it was just based on professional experience rather than hard facts. Okay, so that's on traffic now. And the other thing I'd like to mention before I move forward on traffic is that we do lodge an objection to the additional conditions of approval being brought in today by Ms. Houston. On Wednesday, January 13th, at 1:22 PM, I received an email from City Attorney Trask, who said that there will be no further evidence received, and the evidence portion of the case, other than the email's correspondence received by 5:30 on January 7th, 2021, remains closed. On January 13th, some additional conditions were submitted to the city from the applicant with a document from Kim Lee Horn detailing some of the costs. So we do lodge our objection on that. Now, moving forward, not going to get into all the details, you heard it from us during our testimony as to our concerns about conservation and habitat. The rezoning must be compatible with existing and planned uses in the area, and it's, again, the applicant's burden. Is it competent? Is it substantial? Is it adequate so that it will not result in adverse impacts to the environment? You heard from Ms. Walker about eagles and carrying capacity and her serious concerns. She provided details saying as to why the applicant's proposal is insufficient to meet this burden. You heard from Mr. Parisi as to why the 2018 Listed Species Report should be updated to contain more detail on certain types of plants and that the footprint of the development will very likely disrupt tidal pods on the property. You also saw drone footage, which, again, is a video, and it is fact-based, and these types of videos are allowed in for you to consider as competent substantial evidence. The drone footage shows how the area is part of this larger ecosystem. We also submitted a letter from Ms. Nicole Matthews that spoke to why the land is connected habitat that impacts other areas of Tarpon Springs and the Anclot River floodplain and the lasting adverse impacts on wildlife and habitats. Ultimately, for these conservation issues, it shows that it's not compatible, and the applicant has not met their burden as far as what's competent, what's substantial, and what's reasonable, that's adequate, to show that they've fulfilled all these criteria of it being not resulting in adverse impacts to the environment. Coastal management does the same thing. There are a number of comp plan objections, objectives, that were not really spoken to in detail. Ms. Walker also spoke about the need to protect significant upland habitat. And Ms. Hanson also raised the issue of the project and the city's membership in the Tampa Bay Regional Resilience Coalition and how they, you know, have some issues that need to be fulfilled through there. For recreation, it also asks, you have to look at, is it consistent with the comp plan? Ms. Carapani informed me that recreation on this project is totally private, not open to the public. Condition 16 also says that 10 boat slips are for the sole benefit of the residents of the project. You've heard from countless members of the community today, and also testimony from our clients directly as to what he did for recreation that shows that the public wants a park. And Policy 1.5.2 talks about land designated as recreation open space by future land use map shall be protected for the establishment or expansion of incompatible uses. And moreover, really, Objective 1.5 talks about preserving environmentally sensitive and endangered lands for passive recreation. Ultimately, I want you to look at this decision, and when you hear this overwhelming and loud support from the public for a park, ask yourself, have you fully explored this? Are there other possibilities? Is there a mitigation bank that could be put on the property? Are there educational or learning experiences, partnerships with organizations like the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, local colleges and schools, Fitness Trail, Equine Research, as Dr. Darlene Williams spoke about today in one of her public comments. Ultimately, this comes down to your judgment and your common sense and asking yourself, I've been presented a lot of evidence relating to traffic, conservation plan, and other areas, and does it meet the criteria? Some final thoughts, of the 178 pages of public comments that were read today into the record, there were only two letters of support. One of them was for the broker from Walmart, and the other was from a local planner who didn't really speak in support but had a list of things that he'd like to see changed. Everyone else had objections. This goes to the compatibility of this project. And ultimately, when you're looking at the criteria, compatibility in the area is extremely important as part of the comprehensive plan and as part of the specific criteria. The applicant has not met their burden to meet the criteria in the code or the comp plan. At very least, there are many questions remaining as to traffic safety, environmental, coastal, and recreational impacts. And again, it is not concerned citizens' burden to prove to you that there are impacts, it's their burden to prove that there aren't impacts. And even if we did have to, we have presented enough competent substantial evidence to make your decision today. These traffic safety issues are a little bit like Russian roulette, and, you know, with these issues brought up of just one day of observation for the gap study, and then you heard from someone from FDOT, but you never heard from the traffic planner for the city again, these are serious issues. If you have something in your gut telling you that there's something wrong, there's something that isn't clear, you don't have all the answers tonight, it means that the applicant hasn't made their case. And because of that, we're requesting that you deny the application tonight. This comes down to your common sense, your judgment, and your legacy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Armstrong, you have a final say, and then we're going to close it to the public and bring it to the commission for consideration.
Yes, thank you, and I'll limit my comments to a couple of points raised by Ms. Graham. You know, she mentioned level of service F in terms of concurrency analysis, you know, as if it mattered. If you go back to the testimony of our traffic expert, Christopher Hatton, who's a professional engineer, he talked about that. And the essence of his testimony was, under the Community Planning Act, which was momentous statewide legislation, the level of service analysis kind of fell by the wayside and was supplanted by a mobility management plan. It was past the statewide level, past the Pinellas County level, and then passed here at your city of Tarpon Springs. And that's what governs the concurrency analysis, not level of service. That's way back in the past. And perhaps as an insight, when my partner, Mr. McLaren, asked Mr. Houston if he was familiar with the Community Planning Act, his answer was, no, I'm not. Obviously, that was the truth. He isn't. Should be, but he's not. And as to Ms. Graham's objection to the timing of your staff sending out revised suggested conditions of approval, they were a few pages long from our staff. We got them at some point this afternoon, I believe. But this is the same person who dropped 556 pages on us about the same time of day before our last hearing. She is a stop from objecting based on a timing basis. It's not unusual for us to refine and discuss conditions of approval at the hearing. We may well be doing this this evening. Bottom line, we met our burden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So Mayor, now it's back to the commission for consideration for a motion and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Trask.
We're going to distribute the revised ordinance so that you have that.
We have this revised with the corrections that I discussed during my closing.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is correct. Why don't you just stand it down? Renee, can you also make sure that that has been emailed to Ms. Graham so she has it too? Can you do that now?
I'll ask Pat to do it right now.
Okay, and have you given it to Mr. Armstrong as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So everybody has it then? Okay, Mayor, back to you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the applicant for bringing these big project to Tarpon Springs. I'd like to thank the staff for their hard work, the dedication, their professionalism. Especially, I want to thank the public for their comments. We have heard a lot of testimony from the applicant and his team, the city staff, the concerned citizens, and from the public. Now it's time for us to make a decision. This item is a quasi-traditional, so we make our decision based on the evidence presented to us. Now the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the applications with the conditions 1 through 28 with the removal of condition 24 and an adjustment to condition 22 as the following is provided from staff. In 22, I would make the recommendation that, I do think it's a good idea that a traffic study is completed on Hayes Road and the area back behind that area before the city decides if they want to build this road. The applicant has committed $509,000 to construct the road. The city is recommending $65,000 for a traffic study of some sort. If it concludes that they do not want to build a road back there, there's a requirement for the applicant to still build a secondary entrance for emergency vehicles somewhere on 19, and then refund, or the $444,000 remaining would then not go to the Transportation Fund, but I'd like to make a proposal that it not go back and be released, but it would go to the City of Tarpon Springs Preservation Land Fund as an alternative. With that, there's a significant amount of comments tonight about preserving land. I think that's something that the applicant has shown that they're willing to put forward for the road construction. And I think if Hayes Road isn't going to be built, that there's still an opportunity to contribute to the Preservation Fund and then also preserve some additional land in Tarpon Springs, as plenty of the comments have been made tonight by the public comment.
Vice Mayor, before we go to comments, we need a second. Before we go through your comments, we need to go to a second. We need a second.
I'll second that for the sake of discussion.
Please continue.
Yeah, so that was just, that was for item number 22 in the backup. From a discussion standpoint, the mayor talked about this, the city attorneys talked about it, and it's not about, is this a decision for a park or is this a decision for a apartment complex? And I know I've had a lot of people reach out, there's been a lot of emails coming straight to us, there's been a lot of emails read tonight, there's been a lot of public comment. There's a lot of passion behind this overall. At the end of the day, we have to weigh the facts that have been laid before us, and I feel that the facts haven't laid before us to make a decision tonight. Again, it's not, do I feel, is it a good idea? Do I want to park? Or do I want an apartment complex? That's not the discussion tonight, and we have to go off of what the facts have been made. If the criteria has been met, we vote yes. If the criteria hasn't been met, we vote no. A couple of items that have been discussed tonight is that the project being proposed is well below the allowed density currently sitting on this property. Ultimately means they're building a lot less apartment complexes than what they're allowed to do currently today. There's a significant amount of land that they plan on placing in a preservation and recreation area. There's a large buffer along the Anclot River. The property is being downzoned from where it sits today with the potential of other uses that could be much, much higher. Stormwater is captured with an adequate amount of stormwater pond before it goes into the Anclot River. A significant amount of wetlands will be untouched and preserved, the natural resources, including the riverfront, wetlands, and a good amount of uplands. Although I don't agree with all parts of the application, it's not really how I feel. It's the evidence that's placed before us. Just to touch a little bit further on item number 22, I do think that's an opportunity for the city and the applicant to work together if a pay's road doesn't work out, to find some desires from the public, to find some other areas to preserve land in Tarpon Springs. I do understand the need for a second exit. I do understand the need for a second exit. I prefer a second exit myself. I would rather see a second exit instead of entrance and exit on Hayes Road. I think that's important. And allow emergency vehicle only to entrance in Hayes Road if it gets that far. There's also a lot of discussion about Jasmine Road being a county road, a small county road or a small country road. This is areas that we could work with the county on as well. The city's already working on putting sidewalks on this stretch of road by the Discovery Playground and the Cemetery this fiscal year. And looking at also the building application and how they've improved to bring in some other green alternatives in the billing standards, I think the applicant has done a good job overall with preserving a significant amount of space in this application and really what it could have been from a development standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, tonight we have an application that we're here to review and to make a decision. As I stated at the last meeting, I have three concerns. I had three concerns. My first concern was condition 14, a piece of property that was offered to the city for park in exchange of a credit of impact fees. Well, that issue is no longer, that's not an issue any longer because it's off the table. My second concern was what impact this development will have to the wetlands. The applicant explained to us that the impact to the wetlands will be only one acre, and the mitigation will be done on site. My third concern is the traffic that will be developed in years 19 from the cars trying to turn on north and south in years 19. We heard testimony on traffic from several traffic engineers, including the city consultant traffic engineer, Mrs. Heis, the applicant traffic engineer, Christopher Hutton, and the FDOT traffic engineer, Prevezano. The study that they provided to us indicates that the five-second gaps are sufficient for residents to be able to cross the three lanes to make a turn going north and south in years 19. The engineers claim this theory is a safe approach. But for safety reasons, in the last meeting, I had asked Vice Mayor Carr to include in his motion the construction of Hayes Road as a secondary access. And I also agree with the comment that was made by the Vice Mayor Carr that the construction of the secondary access should be responsibility of the developer. I appreciate the applicant now is offering to the city Transportation Fund the amount of $509,000 to build a Hayes Road for secondary access. The project, this project is not, it's like any other project, is not perfect. The project, this property is, has unique environmental features, but I think the developer came up with a good design to provide significant setbacks to protect the Eagles and the Anclot River. Also, the applicant addition, is suggesting additional conditions to include, the applicant will extend the existing reclaimed water line to the project on its own expense. The applicant will install solar panels to serve the main clubhouse. The applicant will provide electric vehicles charging stations to install, and also he's going to install conduit to each building for growth, for future growth, and all the landscaping recommendations made by the Vice Mayor. So this is my observations. And also hearing tonight, our city planner, Mrs. Vincent, said that this project meets the criteria, and she's recommending approval. Again, this is my observation, and now I'm going to commission Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the public for their passion and input on this issue. It's been multiple meetings, a couple of months now actually, in the making. I want to clarify some discussion, highlight the strong point of the project, and also address my main concern tonight. I want to clarify that we are not debating whether this should be a park or a development. We are hearing a preliminary planned development and rezoning. Property owners have rights. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and we cannot allow our emotions to dictate our decision. The star point of this project, depending on how the discussion of Hayes Road goes, is that the developer is proposing to leave 54% of the property undeveloped and over 90% of the wetlands undisturbed. My main concern surrounding the project is the potential Hayes Road access point. It has been suggested that there may be a need to use eminent domain when constructing the road. I can't justify taking residents' property away from them to create a secondary access point for a private development. The possibility of eminent domain being used would be a deal breaker for me. So if we decide to move forward with this tonight, I'm going to need a motion to include a stipulation that eminent domain cannot be used on this project at any point for any reason. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan, do you are asking to modify the motion so there will be no eminent domain?
I would, so that there be no eminent domain at any time.
Vice Mayor, would you accept that?
I would accept that.
And I'm sure you accepted the second, right?
Yes.
Thank you. You finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Commission of Tekeodas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to discuss the merits of apartments or anything like that. I'm going to stick to the process, and I see things a little differently than I think you three do. First, I'd like to thank the applicant, the Morgan Group, Mr. Camille Salome for their desire to invest in Tarpon Springs. Also wish to thank Mr. Armstrong and his team, and also Ms. Graham and the Concerned Citizens Group. For the record, I've read all the backup, watched the videos of the two TRC meetings, the PNC meeting, and closely listened and have read everyone's email. My position on this project hasn't really changed from my final comment at the end of the very first commission hearing on this project. I needed definitive answers to questions. In general, I understand the environmental impacts as described by Mr. Nicholas, the applicant's environmental consultant. He did a very good job in characterizing the site. I also appreciated all the observations from the concerned citizens' experts. We've liked to have seen conservation easements over a large part of the preservation, recreation, open space lands. It's a policy in our comprehensive plan. It was also discussed at the first TRC meeting in September, but was not followed through by city staff. I believe conservation easements where the rights to those easements are deeded to the city would have given many of the concerned citizens some consolation that the environment, especially along the river and the wetlands, would be better protected. Regarding the issue of consistency, the comprehensive and the comprehensive plan, Mr. Armstrong in a comment to the PNC board hit the nail on the head. It's a complex project. However, some aspects of the project were not addressed. The process for determining consistency is rather straightforward. You go through each of the 11 elements of the plan, policy by policy. Some aspects of that process was accomplished here, some was not. Examples of those that were not initially were reclaimed water provisions for connecting the bicycle trail and the conservation easements just mentioned. Nevertheless, the biggest issue for me since the first hearing and continues to be is access management. Based on the testimony, it's astonishing that 404 residences, upwards of 10% of the city's population, the applicant and the staff would consider a single access on a failed level of service highway without signalization and without giving a second access any consideration. Also, we heard from FDOT that single access will work, but if it doesn't, based on future accident rates, an adjustment can be made. If I had not known beforehand that it was an FDOT District 7 representative, I would have never guessed it. This conditional approval by FDOT for the single access offset median openings was given in May 2019, 20 months ago. Since that time, as I mentioned above, there hasn't been any discussion that I've seen from the applicant for the city staff of the second access. In fact, as early as the first TRC meeting on September 3rd, five months ago, the city staff seemed to accept the applicant's reason for a waiver without analysis to back up that reason. That leads us to Hayes Road. The question of Hayes Road as a second access was raised in response to the applicant's position that there were no options for a second access, even though none had been discussed. Hayes Road had not been considered, Hayes Road had been considered before as a second access by a former project. Subsequently, the applicant has taken a position that if the second access is required and the city wants Hayes Road as the second access, it would be up to the city to build it, and the applicant will contribute $509,000 for that purpose. However, the Hayes Road right-of-way is partially owned by Pinellas County. The city has no authority for building Hayes Road by itself. As of last week, the county has not been contacted or consulted. No studies have been performed as to its suitability for or its impact to the surrounding neighborhood on Jasmine or its effects on the nearby FDOT intersections, something that FDOT wants to see. We simply do not know, except now, the study is being proposed. Two points to be made here. First, the applicant, not the city, should propose where a second access would be. It may be Hayes Road, it may be elsewhere. It's up to the applicant, it's his project. That did not happen. I don't believe much consideration has been given in that regard. Once proposed by the applicant, the selection should have been submitted to the TRC for its review, followed by the PNC board for its consideration. Neither of these actions took place. Whatever happens from here, if a second access is considered, I would certainly hope it would be reviewed by the TRC. So where do we go from here? And I think the options that I'm going to spell out have largely been addressed. There were two options, as I see it. One is a motion to approve the preliminary development plan based on the evidence and conditions presented. A second motion is to approve the second reading with a condition of a third reading before approval is granted. Of course, there can also be no motion, and the project is denied for lack of motion, which of course hasn't happened. And we've got the first option, which is to approve the preliminary development plan with the conditions as were brought to us by Ms. Vincent this evening. For me, I'm not going to be making a motion, which I had not, to approve the preliminary plan based on the evidence and conditions presented, including those in Ms. Vincent's email today. At this point, one access has been proposed and reviewed, two are required. I do not agree with a waiver of a second access for the reasons stated, and I will not accept Hayes Road as a second access at face value, nor will I agree to the city, for the city to build it. I will support a third reading, although it may be a moot point at this point, to give time to the developer, if he so chooses, to try working out his differences with the Concerned Citizens Group, although after Mr. Armstrong, Ms. Graham squaring off tonight, I'm not so sure. This time could be used to perform more analyses and to work and to work any resulting changes through the city staff in Pinellas County before returning to the commission. It can take as much time as he chooses, or he can withdraw the application. For me, the loose ends of this project do not just involve a second access. There's others, I gave you a two-page document tonight. One of them is the conservation easements. I recognize the importance of this project in a variety of areas. I also recognize the great amount of time and money already spent by the developer in getting to this point. Don't take too much out of what I'm saying here. I'm simply wanting to be fair to everyone, both the applicant and the Concerned Citizens Group. Did not have a chance to exchange views and opinions and ideas until the quasi-judicial process, which is the wrong venue for that type of interaction. Lastly, which I don't think is going to happen, if we get to a third reading, I strongly recommend that the applicant refer to my markup of the applicant's suggestions that I provided this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? If not, we...
I've got a quick question for the attorney. City Attorney, the, Ms. Graham brought up a question about what she called evidence being brought up at the last minute from the city, or the conditions being brought into or slash proposed by the city staff earlier today. Is there any issues with that?
They did not offer any additional evidence. What they've offered is possibility of settlement of outstanding issues. I don't consider evidence.
Okay. And then from a third reading, what, I've done a couple of third readings for formality reasons. I mean, what would be a reason for a third reading of a project like this? Would be mostly formality, wouldn't that be the case?
The only time that we ever done a third reading of an ordinance is when we've had a technical problem, and that is in advertising and making sure that notice had been perfected. That is not the issue here. And as for the third reading that Commissioner Vaticiatus is recommending, that would require basically opening up the quasi-judicial hearing again and receiving additional evidence from both concerned citizens and Mr. Armstrong's client, and hearing from the public again. So it would be basically opening up this quasi-judicial hearing as if we started it again on January 7th, entire presentations.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification, but for clarification one more time, our code requires a second reading and a first reading, correct?
That's right, the code does not require a third reading.
All right, thank you.
But before we go to vote, could I get a summarization of the motion that we're making? I just want to make sure the wording's appropriate for...
So I think that I can do that for you. It's basically, the motion was to approve ordinance 2020-34 as presented to you in the document about a half hour or so ago that says at the very top, revised to include applicant's additional conditions for discussion. In addition to that, there was a recommendation, or the motion included in paragraph number 22, that instead of the $444,000 being refunded to the developer, that that $444,000, if Hayes Road was not going to be built, would be deposited into a preservation fund. In addition to that, there was a requirement that there would be no use of eminent domain on this project on the city's behalf. That's what my notes reflect.
And item 24 was struck also.
For struck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I have another comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I don't like the way this is set up tonight. I mean, we're obligating or committing ourselves to accept what's in front of us. If the, if a second access is not demonstrated in one way or the other to meet the five conditions that's in our land development code, then the commission could consider a waiver. We're bypassing that, we're automatically giving a waiver without having done that. We don't know what the study for Hayes Road is going to say. And then also, there's absolutely no guarantee that FDOT will give a second emergency access. So this commission, the way this motion is set up tonight, is guaranteeing a single access if those three, two or three things that I just described aren't going to play out. And if you're that confident that that's, one of those is going to happen, I wish you well. I don't. Not the way this application has been presented, and it's been piecemealed ever since the PNC hearing, and then we've gone through one hearing with additional analyses supported, our consultants not even being brought on board until beginning the first hearing, and then followed up with additional comments between the first hearing and the second hearing. And as far as I'm concerned, there's still loose ends. And now we're facing a study to do for a secondary access. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this at all, and I just want to state that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to add, on your... Also like to add, in regards to the emergency access, Vice Mayor, on your motion, in case the Hayes Road does not, it will not materialize, do you have an emergency access of years 19?
To have one, correct? Yeah, I would, I would amend my motion to include that.
Can you state that again, please?
What I, what I recommended to the Vice Mayor to modify his motion was in case the Hayes Road does not materialize, to go ahead and to make sure that we have an emergency access on years 19.
How are you going to make sure you have an emergency access? It's got to be permitted, and we don't know that, whether it's going to be approved.
We're not here to design it, we're here to pass it or not to pass.
It's part of the condition.
It's part of the condition.
I think we need a second for that then, Mayor.
My second, my second stays.
All right. If we, if no more comments, then I will ask for roll call.
Call now?
Huh?
Roll call?
Correct.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Well, that concludes the continuation of the regular session agenda, and we go to the staff comments. Major?
No comments, thank you.
Major Young?
No comments.
Thank you. Fask?
None tonight, thank you.
Mr. Licouris?
Yes, I sent you an email during the hearing that our internal auditor candidate has taken herself out of the running for the job. Just wanted to ask tonight, so otherwise it'd be the next meeting and stuff. If you wanted me to come Tuesday when we're back in the office to begin the process of doing a re-advertising for that job.
Well, Mr. Licouris, it's too bad that the lady withdraw her application because I think she was very well qualified. But I think the sooner the better to start the process, in my opinion. Vice Mayor, what's your take on that?
Yeah, I think it's good to get it going as an advertisement moving forward. I think that's important, so I would support putting it back out and advertising as soon as possible.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, it's a shame we're back to square one with it, but what can we do? Let's go back as soon as we can.
Okay, Commission, what do you care to?
Yes, please re-advertise and-
We'll start soon.
City Manager Licouris, as far as, if you could just email from Ms. Niffen, how long the advertisement will run this time?
Okay.
Well, I think the same areas that we're going to advertise-
Same process.
And then the, how long when this advertising closes out for our own planning purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk? I want to thank you both ladies for your hard work and dedication, we appreciate it. I don't know. I just want to thank you both for doing an excellent job, appreciate them very much. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. Obviously, this, this application that was before us tonight and many, many hours of discussions and comments have been going on for a couple of months now. It's brought to attention that we have a passionate group of individuals in Tarpon Springs across the border.
Oh, no.
You okay?
You okay?
Okay. One thing I do want to talk about is- Okay. One thing I've asked the city manager to look at for this coming budget season and also to evaluate our code enforcement funds that are received. Currently, City Tarpon Springs has a preservation fund with about $50,000 something thousand in it. That's sitting stagnant today and there's no way for it to be funded. There's no way for us as a city to use it to really buy any property because $50,000 is not very much. So I mean, I'm proposing that the city look at an opportunity to fund it each year through the general fund of $20,000. Could be general penny fund, and then also look at part of the code enforcement fines that are levied on a property owner on top of the, after the administration charges go towards that fund and a couple of other funds within the city instead of just dropping back into the general fund. So I do think it's important that we look at as a city to really target lands that we want to look at to preserve and, and potentially purchase as we're seeing more requests of this from our residents. I think it's important that we work with the county as well to acquire some of these lands too, moving forward. This one, in my opinion, I think was, we missed the opportunity on that one. And I would like to be more proactive moving forward on additional properties around Tarpon Springs. So with that, we'll see you guys probably next week or the week after.
The week after. Commission Donovan, comments?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
Commission, what do you care to, any comments? Nothing, thank you, okay. Well, Monday, February 18th is the day we celebrate the life and legacy of a great leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This year, due to the pandemic and CDC guidelines, we will not be hosting the parade in the city. Instead, we will have a virtual celebration in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. And I'd like to thank the Veron Smith, our churches, the city staff, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation in Tarpon Springs for putting this special dedication together. Hoping next year we'll be able to have a nice parade to be honored Dr. Luther King.
Mayor, if I may also, I've got an email, I've been reading some emails as we've been going along, but Suzanne Linton, our IT, is also going to be put on our TV channel. We're announcing dates where that virtual parade is going to be on Saturday, 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM, 6:00 PM, Sunday, 9:00, 3:00, and 10:30, and Monday, 9:00, 12:00, and 5:00. And we'll be posting that, not only the virtual parade, but they've also got a celebration that's going to be on there. And we'll have it not only on our YouTube and on that, but we will be on our television channel and we'll be getting that word out to the view at the next three days.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to let you know that we sent an email out and an update on the conference call that I had with the Speaker of the House, Chris Bross. And if you please, when you have time, take a look at it. And the discussion was based on the projects that we have, including the the Anclaw River dragging as well as the Depp and his boulevards and the other projects. So please, when you have time, please take a look at that email. Thank you with that. That includes the regular session meeting and it's adjourned at eight-
Seven.
7:30 PM.